Hi, good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this meeting to order. This is the Nashua Zoning Board of Adjustment. If you're looking for the Board of Aldermen, they're downstairs. My name is Jack Currier. I serve you as the Chair of the Zoning Board. To my right is Mary Ellen McKay. She is the Clerk of the Board. And going around clock, counterclockwise, Mr. J. P. Boucher, who's our Vice Chair, also Mr. Robert Shaw and Mr. Steve Lionell, who are members. To my left or to your right is Mr. Carter Falk. He works at City Hall as a Deputy Planning Manager. First, if anyone has a cellphone, I'd ask that you silence it or turn it off so we could have an uninterrupted meeting. And also, if -- so, a couple of points. First, this meeting is recorded in three venues. It's recorded with video, and it'll be replayed probably tomorrow. It's not always at the exact same time, but it's on Channel 16, a local government channel. It's also recorded on audio that in a few days will be put up on the gonashua.com website so you can stream it from a computer or your smartphone. And also, there will be a translation onto a recorded minutes. Those are actually the -- considered the final recording of this. So I ask that only one person speaks at a time, and also, we need to have each person identify their name and address. If your -- the spelling of your name isn't obvious, I'll ask you to spell that so we can get it right in the transcription. So the way this meeting works, there's two components to each case. There's the public hearing and the public meeting. The public hearing occurs first. The public hearing is where we, the Board, and the public hears from you. And so each applicant will have up to 15 minutes to present their case. So the applicant will come to the microphone and present their case. You don't need to use all 15 minutes, but our bylaws are such that you have up to 15 minutes to present your case. It is likely that members of the Board will ask questions perhaps along the way about your application. After the applicant has spoke, anybody else who wishes to speak in favor of the application will have up to five minutes to speak at the microphone. Then, after all favorable testimony is heard, anybody who has questions, concerns, or opposition, the floor will be open to anybody with those concerns, and those folks will have up to five minutes to bring those concerns to light. If there is opposition, then after the opposition is completed, the applicant will have five minutes, up to five minutes, back at the microphone to address the opposition. And after the applicant has addressed the opposition, one and only one person who has spoken in opposition will have up to five minutes to make their final statement, you might say, for their opposition. After the public hearing has concluded, the public meeting on the case will begin. And the public meeting is where the five of us will deliberate on the case and likely come to a decision by New Hampshire law. Three or more affirmative votes are needed for a variance or a special exception. Tonight, we're hearing cases for both variances and special exceptions. There's a slight difference. Variants and special exceptions are deviations from this book here, which is the thick book of Nashua zoning regulations. There's five criteria by state law that this Board needs to hear for variances, and I'll briefly tick through those five criteria for a variance. Number one, the variance will not be contrary to the public interest. Number two, the spirit and intent of the ordinance is observed. Number three, substantial justice is done. Number four, the values of surrounding properties are not diminished. And number five, literal enforcement of the provisions of the ordinance would result in an unnecessary hardship. So that's the five criteria for a variance. For a special exception, the bar is slightly lower. A special exception is a use that's actually permitted in this book, but permitted under certain circumstances. And those five circumstances are that the use is listed in the table of uses in this book. Number two is that the requested use or activity will not create undue traffic congestion or unduly impair pedestrian safety. The third of five is that the requested use or activity will not overload any public water drainage or sewer system. Number four is that if there are any special exception regulations, that they would be fulfilled. And number five is that the requested use or activity will not impair the integrity or be out of character with the district or the immediate neighborhood. So that's the five criteria for a special exception. A few other points I'd like to go through, and that is, we are laypeople. Why are we here? We're citizens. We live in Nashua, and we've felt like contributing to municipal government. The way we end up here is we express an interest. We are appointed by the mayor and then approved by the Board of Aldermen. Generally, we all attend yearly training on the update of zoning laws. It just happened to be last Saturday, once a year in the spring. A few other points. If any person of standing has a disagreement with the decision we come to, the next step is to request a rehearing request, and you have up to 30 calendar days starting tomorrow. So if you are interested in that, you could give Mr. Falk a call to see what that process is. An important point, if we were to rehear a case, if we get a rehearing request, say we make an approval, and then we get a rehearing request, and we find merit in the rehearing request, so we approve the rehearing request to rehear the case, that approval is stayed until we rehear the case. So in other words, if you get an approval or a denial tonight, you know, it's important for that 30-day window for that to solidify, because if there's a rehearing request, it may not be the final call of that. So before we get going, are there any questions from anyone in the audience tonight? I think everyone has a copy of the agenda, but if not, they're on that table over there, so feel free to get a copy of the agenda. And with that, I think, are we ready to go? All right. I'd like to open the public hearing on case number one. I'll read into the record what it is. Case number one is the estate of Estelle Berthweum. It is 266 Broad Street. The request is the following variances. Number one, minimum lot frontage, 75 feet required, 50 feet proposed. Number two, minimum lot width, 90 feet required, 50 feet proposed, and that's to subdivide one lot into three lots. I'd like to point out that this case, or this application, was approved by this Board at our March 28 meeting. However, there was an incorrect advertisement of it, and so it is properly advertised as I just read it. And I guess I will let Mr. Prunier just clarify that. So welcome, if you'd like to give us your name and address and walk us through your application.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the Board. For the record, my name is Gerald Prunier. I'm an attorney with offices at 20 Trafalgar Square in Nashua. Here, as the Chairman has indicated, because of mistaken advertising. Carter and I have been both doing this for an awful long time, and this is the first time that this has happened. And for me, it's almost 50 years. We had the right zone; we just didn't have the right frontage for the thing. Everything else about that plan stays the same. And I'd asked the Chairman if we could incorporate, by reference, the minutes of the meeting of the March 28 where it was granted with all the testimony that was had. It stays the same. The only difference is in the front where it was still the same, but the difference was in the footage in the front, which was 50 versus 60, which in R9 is 75. We do have the 75 here on the lot that we're talking about with the long driveway. So the frontage does meet the seven -- doesn't meet where it's supposed to be in the front, but there is 75-foot in the front yard. Everything else is the same. All the other issues are the same. And the plan is all -- is still the same. Be glad to add -- any questions?
So let me jump in and say, I concur that I -- to incorporate the minutes from the March 28 meeting into this. And just to clarify a question, it was originally advertised, the minimum lot frontage was 60 feet required when 75 is, and then what was the other?
It's the width of the thing. It was 90 feet versus 70.
Seventy-five. So we had advertised it as 75 feet when it should be 90 feet.
The zone that was advertised is correct. It was correct. It was just those numbers that were wrong.
We had advertised with RA zone, frontage and width instead of R9, and it seemed like just everybody missed it. And, you know, it's one of those things that just slip by. It doesn't happen very often at all.
Well, we maintain the three-strike rule, so you're okay so far. Are there any questions, Mr. Shaw?
And I assume no issues with maintaining the same, well, the special conditions that we had applied the first time regarding the screening fences?
Yes.
Any other questions for Mr. Prunier? All right, you can have a seat. I'll ask, is there anybody else with questions? I mean, sorry, with testimony in favor of 266 Broad Street? Is there anyone here with questions or concerns? We do have a letter we received on May 9th from Mr. Neil -- Guild? I think it's G.I.U.L.D., Mr. Neil Guild. Is he here tonight? I think what I'll do is just read this letter into the record. So again, is there any other opposition to 266 Broad Street? So we just have one letter. I'd briefly read that into the minutes. It says, it's dated May 9th of this year. It's to the ZBA concerning 266 Broad Street. My name is Neil Guild. I live at 270 Broad Street, which is the corner of, I think it's Hill Avenue and Broad --
New Hampshire.
Oh, New Hampshire Avenue, thank you. "The area we live in is moderately a quiet neighborhood except for traffic. I am not in favor of dividing 266 Broad Street from one to three lots. Traffic on Broad Street eastbound from Broad Street Elementary School to the Nashville Mall from 5:45 to 9:30 a.m. every day is almost commuter rush traffic. And from 2:45 to 7:00 p.m. westbound from the mall to Nashville High School north, traffic is stop and go. Understanding Saturday, Sunday, people that work all week have to shop, the traffic is worse. The three lots requested with two driveways each lot will add six more to the flow going directly to Broad Street or out back to New Hampshire Avenue then to Broad Street. Thank you for listening. Respectfully submitted, Neil Guild." So, we have that. I think it would be prudent, Mr. -- that's the only opposition we have, so I'd ask Mr. Prunier if you would like to address that for the record.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm not going to argue with Mr. Guild about traffic on Broad Street. At certain times, there is traffic on Broad Street, but we're not adding that much to it. There's one driveway already existing on Broad Street. There's just going to be one more added. The other one goes on New Hampshire Avenue. That eventually probably gets, reasonably gets to Broad Street, but the traffic is minimal for either one of the things. Thank you.
All right. Any questions on that testimony? All right. So with that, I'll close the public hearing and open the public meeting. And I turn to the Board, and I -- looks like Mr. Boucher is ready with a comment, so take it away.
Understanding that there was never an advertising, I don't think it changes the view that I had with the property. I think that even if it was advertised, even advertised this way, I think it's a good plan. You know, the property is being used, is being developed in the best manner possible for that area. And I do think that the extra driveway, though, we know that we hear cases in different parts of cities where traffic is just a problem, but I don't think, again, that the one extra driveway is going to impact the traffic. You know, it's not, I don't think it's that tipping point on the scale to add this driveway. So again, I still support the application even with the change in the zoning.
Thank you. Other thoughts, Mr. Lionell?
I concur with Mr. Boucher. I don't see anything that would change my opinion from the last time. They, you know, we did put in some conditions for screening, and there was discussion about drainage, which is handled separate department. I'm still in favor of this.
Thank you. Mr. Shaw?
Yeah, I'm still in favor. I know we talked the last time also about that the, you know, the density of this property is still not, you know, it's not more than what's allowed here to support three dwellings. And I'm not sure without going back and looking at the math. I know I had made some points and arguments about there might have been an opportunity for how to possibly have configured the lot, both either with the frontage to potentially remove these variance requests that would have forced some creation of even further kind of strange shapes to the lots. That might no longer be exactly the case with this different dimension, but even so, again, I still think that this is a good plan, reasonable, and I think everybody agrees that Broad Street has a lot of traffic, but I don't see it as being a significant or noteworthy change to that part.
Thank you. Ms. McKay?
I don't think I have anything else to offer. I concur with my three partners in the Board here. Don't see anything to change. They're right, there is traffic on Broad Street. You know, there's nothing that's going to change that, so I concur. It's not going to change my opinion.
All right. And my thoughts, I'm in agreement. I think Mr. Boucher captured it all right at the beginning. I agree with Mr. Guild. There's a lot of traffic there. It's slow traffic at the rush hours. I don't drive it on a daily basis. I'm more there on a Saturday, and I feel that traffic. But I'm in a gru -- we discuss, I think all five of us completely agree with that. But we're also weighing it with the homeowner use of the land, a rather large lot, and we're, I think we're collectively feeling that the two additional houses is a worthwhile situation for the landowner to have, and the two driveways don't add that much to the heavy traffic that's there. So I think we're, have a consensus that this correctly advertised case is no different than last time. There is a special condition which we had put on, and we're all talking about putting that again, and I didn't know if, would somebody like to hazard a motion? If not, I'll make a motion. Go ahead. Go for it, Mr. Shaw.
I'd like to make a motion on behalf of the owner, estate of Estelle Bertium. Applicant is in favor of Folio LLC. The address is 266 Broad Street. The request is, the following variances. One is minimum lot frontage, where 75 feet is required, 50 feet is proposed, and a minimum lot width, 90 feet required, 50 feet proposed to subdivide one lot into three lots. Special notation is that this was previously approved at the March 28, 2017 ZBA meeting, but the advertisement language was incorrect. It is in the R9 zone. So, and basically, again, as discussed before, and again briefly now, the variance is needed to enable the applicant's proposed use of the property, and that, again, is to divide a lot that's sufficient to support three R9-sized lots. And due to the shape of the lot and the bordering of the property to Broad Street and New Hampshire Avenue, there is no other reasonable or practical means in doing that without the requirement of these two variances. It's within the spirit and intent of the ordinance regarding the usage of the property. There's no testimony, one way or the other, regarding any negative effects on property values of the surrounding properties. It's not contrary to public interest. There was discussion and concern expressed about the traffic conditions on Broad Street and the addition of two additional homes and traffic that will either feed directly with the driveway or through New Hampshire Avenue. While acknowledging this is a general concern about the traffic, the additional burden on traffic from this development will not be significant, and substantial justice will be served by granting this. Do note that, as previously requested, we are putting two special conditions on this to do screening fences on the full easterly side of Lot 460-1 and on the westerly property line abutting for New Hampshire Avenue. And with that, I make a motion, again, to approve this application.
Motion to table, seconded by Mr. Lionell. Any discussion on the motion?
Just also, I know previously, and again, I'd just like to just once again add that I had expressed the, at least the desire or preference based especially on the abutting property on New Hampshire Avenue, and I forget if that was number two or what the number was. Oh, number four, yeah. That the home that's being placed with the driveway on NH Avenue be shifted as much as possible towards the center of the lot, or at least away from that left edge, just to provide some additional barrier, but even with the screening fence provided.
You had expressed that desire. I think the Board unanimously agreed with that desire to, as much as reasonable, to move that house at four, proposed lot for New Hampshire Avenue, to the right as you look at it.
And I think the idea was, we didn't feel that it kind of rose the level of a stipulation not knowing the particulars of developing it, and that there would also be ultimately a site plan, and the subdivision has to happen, get through the planning board as well. So I think we also felt that by expressing that kind of recommendation or guidance, we were helping the process along but not being too restrictive.
That's how I remember it, and I think it's an optimal way to, for us to state that. And I'm seeing five heads nodding in agreement with your verbal testimony. So with that discussion and the motion on the table, any other discussion? Show of hands in favor. Okay, so that's unanimous, so that's proposed. So again, good luck with your project. And I'll close the public meeting on case number one. Thank you. You're welcome. I'd like to open the public hearing on case number two. The owners are Paul and Jerry Ann Patty. The address is 3 Monica Drive. And I'll read into the record, the request is a special exception. This is not a variance, it's a special exception. To work within 70, within the 75-foot prime wetland of Salmon Buffer, I'm sorry, the 75-foot prime wetland buffer of Salmon Brook, to reconstruct the failing screen porch and deck, add connecting walkway with stairs for emergency egress, and rebuild a rotting planter at the end of the driveway. This is in the R8 zone, and -- pardon? Oh, I'm sorry, it's R18 zone. Hi, good evening. Could you give us your name and address for the record?
Yes, Mr. Chair. It's Paul Patty, 3 Monica Drive.
Hi, welcome. Would you like to walk us through your application?
Yes, Mr. Chair. My application is for rebuilding a rotting deck and plant, and screen porch, of which the footings or foundation has a retaining wall that is about to tumble down into Salmon Brook, consisting of railroad ties. It was, how do we say, recommended favorably by the Conservation Commission about two weeks ago, I believe. And essentially, needs to be done so that the porch will not fall off and also take the house with it. It's replacement in kind, except for the addition of an egress walkway between the deck and the porch, as currently, if there is a fire or some other safety issue in the house, people can't get off the deck and exit. They would have to literally jump about 12 feet to the ground. Also, the rotting planter is at the end of the driveway, and kind of small, you can all just see up here, but at the very end, going to come off the street into the driveway. The, what keeps cars from going into Salmon Brook is a planter approximately 25 feet long or so, by about two to three feet. And that buffer, essentially, that barrier is currently rotting as well. I'm requesting that be allowed to be replaced as well as the porch and deck.
All right. Thank you. Couple other things while you're there. I just would like to point out that we have a copy. I guess I would also, with this record, I would like to incorporate the minutes of the Conservation Commission meeting, which, as you stated, gave a favorable approval. And if I could put my finger on the letter, which I know is in here because I read it, it is right here. That was April 5th, 2017. There's a couple stipulations. Maybe I'll tick through them real quick. Notification made to the Conservation Commission. Well, let me just say, there's seven stipulations. I think you're familiar with it, and is your testimony that you'll adhere to those seven stipulations?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. And then one other thing I mentioned about this, the special conditions of a special exception. There's nine special conditions. You may or may not be familiar with those. Are you familiar with those?
I still want, but I could use a refresher, please.
All right. So let me just tick through them. The first one is the use cannot reasonably be avoided, and I think your testimony is that's the case. Number two is that the least damaging, best practical alternative is being proposed. And I'm just reading into the record that you are saying yes to that as well as question number one. Number three is that acceptable mitigation is incorporated to minimize any loss.
Yes.
Number four, necessary for productive use of buildable land.
Yes.
And not have it fall into the brook. Number five is that there's no rare or endangered species.
Yes.
Number six is that adequate erosion and sedimentation control methods would be in play.
Yes.
And I would say, you know, that the, one of the stipulations is to use those, the silt fences and stuff. So number seven of nine is that the proposed activity shall not significantly impair wetland capacity for wildlife and fishery functions. That's a yes. I would say these questions are general questions. Things like that apply to some very big projects. This is by the scale, we see kind of a small homeowner project, but the questions remain the same. Number eight, projects should not impair the stability of the water body's bank.
Yes, that's actually going to be reinforced with the new retaining wall.
Right. So it's, it will not impair the stability. And number nine is that the wetland and buffer function and absorption capacity shall not be impaired.
Yes.
Okay. So I think we have your testimony that the criteria is met. Let's see, are there any questions from Mr. Patty? I think we have no questions. I'll take that as that your application was very complete. So thank you. You can have a seat. Is there anybody else to speak in favor of this application? We do have a letter on file. Maybe I'll just paraphrase it, and this is a letter in support of the application, and it is from Mr. Thomas Burke at 15 Monica Drive. He's not a direct abutter, but he mentions, I'll paraphrase, he's resided there for 32 years, and he says that over his tenure there, the property of 3 Monica Drive has been immaculately kept, and in summary, the wetland has been respected and not degraded, and he has no doubt that the good stewardship will continue in Mr. Patty's property. So we have this letter. Is there anybody to speak with questions or concerns or opposition to the request at 3 Monica Drive? No opposition or concerns? So I'll close the public hearing and open the public meeting. Thoughts on the application, Mr. Lionell?
I drove by the property. Of course, I can't really see in the back there, but yes, it's clear that there's, it's wetlands there. Everything here looks to be exactly the way I would want it to be. I don't, I don't have a problem with this at all.
Thank you. Mr. Shaw?
Yeah, I'm good with it. I think, you know, this is one of these cases also where nothing ultimately is really changing of any significance other than essentially getting things back to a better state and less potential negative impact if things were to start to fully fail. So I'm fine with it.
Mr. Boucher?
I agree with the application, and, you know, there's going to be steps taken basically more on the safety concerns, both for the brookhead for the property and the extra egress. So I think it's good planned, and I have no opposition to it.
You, Ms. McKay?
I concur. The report from the Conservation Commission supported Mr. Patty and the work that he plans to do. The letter testifies to thirty-two years of, you know, good stewardship of the land and of the property, and he's looking to improve. He should be commended. I certainly approve.
All right, thank you. And my, I'm favorable also, you know, this is also one of those cases where these stretch of houses, this neighborhood was built before there were wetland requirements, and then, you know, seventy-five foot buffer is overlaid, and properties like this, you know, almost any sort of construction, you know, or repair, you know, needs, you know, fortunately or unfortunately, go through this process. If it were, you know, not in the buffer, it would just be pull a permit and go. But because it was built and then a buffer comes along for good reason, you know, it's entwined with, with all this. So I think that there's five of us sitting favorable. Would anybody like to make a motion? If not, I'll, Mr. Boucher, have at it.
I'd like to make a motion to approve this special exception for Paul A. and Jermaine K. Patty, owners, three Monica Drive, sheet D. Luddy, eight oh four. They're requesting a special exception to work within the seventy-five foot prime wetland buffer of Salmon Brook to reconstruct a failing screen porch and deck, add a connecting walkway with stairs for emergency egress, and rebuild a rotting planter at the end of the driveway. This is in the R eighteen zone, code section one ninety dash one twelve. We find that it is in the table of uses. It will not create undue traffic congestion or duly impair pedestrian safety. It will not overload the public water drainage or sewer of other municipal systems. Special regulations are fulfilled. It was testimony by the applicant that the wetland special conditions would be fulfilled. It will not impair integrity or be out of character with the neighborhood or be detrimental to health, morals, or welfare of residents. This case was heard by the Conservation Commission on April...
Meeting was April seventh.
April's...
There's something that's not quite matches up with. The letterhead date says April fifth, and the meeting was April seventh.
So the April seventh meeting, the Conservation Commission gave a favorable recommendation, and there are seven following, seven stipulations, which again, the applicant has affirmed that he is well aware of and will follow.
All right. Seconded by Mr. Shaw. Any discussion on the motion? Maybe I just throw in that the wetland criteria by testimony that maybe you said that and I missed it. You did say, I'm sorry.
That's good. It's good to reaffirm it.
I'll take that. Any other discussion?
Any other detail I was going to add, and I was surprised because you're usually so diligent about this, the section number was one ninety dash one twelve of the code. He did say that. I heard him.
It's a good thing you reaffirmed it. All right, any other discussion?
I could've sworn there was.
A show of hands in favor of three Monica Drive. So congratulations, your application is approved. Remember, there is that thirty-day window of appeal. I want to keep that in mind. So with that, I'll close the public meeting, and have a good evening. All right, I'd like to open the public hearing on case number three. The owner is John Leatherman and Lucy Rodriguez. The address is six Gagnon Circle. The request is a variance to encroach four feet into the twenty-foot required front yard setback to construct a seven-foot by eight-foot front entrance vestibule. This is in the R nine zone. And good evening, I assume you're Mr. Leatherman, but I don't want, maybe I shouldn't assume that. If you could give us your name and address for the record and walk us through your application.
Absolutely. My name's John Leatherman from six Gagnon Circles.
You can pull that microphone up when you're back, you know, raise it up a little because you're a tall guy and the microphone is a little south of where it should be. There we go.
Okay, can you hear me now? Uh, yes, basically, we have a, a house built in nineteen seventy-four as a one-story ranch. Second floor was built in nineteen ninety-two, and presently, our front door is in a dilapidated state. We're going to change our front door. Currently, as constructed, the stairs going to the upstairs is, the front door barely clears that stairs. So since we're going to change the door, we wanted to kind of give ourselves more space and kind of a grander entranceway, if you will. So to do that, we're proposing this seven-foot by eight-foot addition to the front of the house, both first story and second story, again, to give us a larger entranceway and also to give us more closet space on the second floor. So we will impede twenty feet into the allowance, I guess currently we have twenty-three and a half feet to the plot line, and we're going to build seven feet from that, so we'll impede four feet into that from the plot line. I took some measurements myself to the, to the roadway, so even with the addition, our stairs would still be twenty-two feet from the roadway. And I realize this is to the plot line, but from my measurements, we'd still have twenty-two feet from this edge of the stairs to the roadway.
All right, hold on a minute. Are there any questions for Mr. Leatherman? We have a question, Mr. Lionel.
I'm a little bit confused. You said something about a closet on the second floor, so this, this would essentially be a two-story high addition?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that's not what I would have considered a vestibule. I, I note that it would look very different from the surrounding houses. I, you know, I understand, you know, the front steps are, are run down on all of them. They're just these concrete steps, and I can understand that. You are allowed a three-foot canopy, I think by code, into the setback area. But I didn't, you mentioned of it going up to the second floor is something that's, that's not really expressed in here.
I believe our contractor submitted some drawings for that. I don't know whether he had them or not.
Actually, I think in the application we have, it's, there's not a picture of that in there.
It just shows a footprint. I mean, it's just, you know, setbacks go from the ground all the way up through to the sky, so, I mean, I think it's advertised correctly. The request really is to encroach what we think and what the applicant says is four feet into the twenty-foot setback for just a little portion of that setback. It's not the whole thing, it's just a little portion where the vestibule will come out. Whether you want to call it a vestibule or a front entryway foyer or something, it's different terminology. But, you know, we, we think it's advertised.
I don't disagree that it's advertised correctly, it's just wasn't what I was expecting based on the description.
All right, any other questions? I guess I have a question. I can't say I've been on Gagnon Circle until I took a look at your proposal and did a site walk. But the house on your right, in other words, if you're looking at your house from the street, the house to the right, that seems to be closer to the road. I mean, it was probably built the same genre yours is. And the thought I had was, it looked to me like what you're proposing isn't going to be any closer to the road than the neighbor on the right, but that's just my eyeball.
Yes, sir, I observed the same thing. I saw quite a few houses, as I walked by that area, that I thought the front door was within the twenty feet from the, from the street. I'm not even looking at the plot line. I'm looking at it from the street.
Just curious, I mean, sometime, you know, that happens oftentimes, houses are built and zoning changes, you know, so that doesn't mean there's a violation, it's just, it is the way it is. But I guess I make that note because one of the things I think is good to look for is, does it look out of place or does it match the neighborhood? Is it in character or out of character? And from my simple walk around, it seemed to be not out of character because the house on your right looked to be fairly closer, closer to the road. It's not really a question, I guess it's just an observation I wanted to throw out on the record. And, uh, any other questions for Mr. Leatherman? All right, well, thanks. You could have a seat. Is there anybody else who'd like to speak in favor of the proposed addition in front of the front door at six Gagnon Circle? Is there any questions, concerns, or opposition? I see no opposition, going once, twice, sold. And folks, you don't need to stay for the whole meeting, but you're welcome to. If you stay to the end, you'll get an invitation to join the board. That'll get you out of here, huh?
I just didn't want to...
No, it's fine to...
You can come and go.
You can come and go. And I make that point, if your case isn't being heard and you want to run out or have a conversation, feel free to go out in the hall. Okay, thanks, have a good evening, folks. So we don't have any opposition, so I'm going to close the public hearing and open the public meeting on six Gagnon Circle. Thoughts, Mr. Lionel, or you want to kick off?
I, if it were, it's going to look very different from, from the rest of the neighborhood. I mean, it's essentially, it's essentially a bump out of the house. And I, we're discussing the variance for the setback, you know, four feet in the twenty-foot. Yeah, I agree that the other house, at least one other house seems to have a, an entryway that's closer. I'm relatively new to the board, as you know, so I, I don't know how much character of the neighborhood fits in with, with our decisions here. Carter, Mr. Falk, would you like to comment on that?
Well, for one thing, the zoning board is not a architectural review board. Character of the neighborhood is a much more involved and broader topic. The character of the neighborhood might be, say, there's a, a street with twenty single-family homes, and someone wants to put in a two-family. Well, that two-family might be out of the character of the use of that street, which is a single-family street. Or say, like on a, a, for signs, for example, say you have a little commercial area like Broad Street between Amherst Street and Exit Six. You have small little businesses. If someone wanted to put up a sign that's four hundred square feet, that would be out of the character of that neighborhood. Character is, this, you know, to me, Gagnon Circle's got, you know, like six, six houses, they're all single-family homes, garages, and decent-sized lots, good-sized lots, cul-de-sac streets, it's a, it's a, the street just stops after a few houses. You know, to me, it's a single-family zone, a single-family neighborhood with single-family homes, like, that's what the character of the neighborhood is really is. They don't all have to look alike, they don't all have to be, you know, uniform in style. I mean, you could have a cape, a ranch, a garrison, colonial, and a gambrel. You know, if that's what the homeowners have decided to do as far as to make their usable space in the house better, it's a very small incursion numerically or percentage-wise into the, the front yard setback as far as I could see. It's still a single-family home. I mean, I, I wouldn't think it's out of the character of the neighborhood per se. I see what you're, I see where you're going because it's a, it's a different look to the house. And, but, and at the end of the day, it's still a single-family home and a single-family neighborhood, and we don't really have architectural review, at least here. In other parts of the city, there are historical or architectural review, like such on Concord Street, or like in Maplewood, you know, where there are some covenants and some restrictions that restrict what things look like. But in this neighborhood, they're, they don't have that.
Okay, thanks.
That's, that's why I would look at it in our staff's view.
All right, moving on, Mr. Shaw?
Yeah, and I guess I, one thing I might speak to, kind of, whether it's technically in that definition or from a character of neighborhood, when I, you know, and actually just to my very super rough measurements with my, into my pen, but even though it wouldn't appear from the street and it's kind of to the applicant's notation, and, you know, it looks like number three and number five might already be closer than, than number six is when you look at the actual property line, but they have, especially number three, has got a lot further frontage, parent frontage because of the way the pavement is. But I guess in kind of taking that a little bit further, my thought was that this is a street where all the homes are relatively close to the street, relatively close to the setback, possibly already encroaching. And so in one sense, we're not looking at taking this one house that's really kind of pushed up against the setback and, and having it really kind of further encroach or now encroach when everything else is set back like quite a distance. To me, that might be where it would come a little bit more into play of the feel of this, okay, this house is already kind of a little bit kind of odd in its setting versus the others. So, so I think that, to me, one of the things that's kind of compelling about this, and you look at it, it looks like, it looks like the front entrance of this house is placed almost at the very minimum setback to that arc of, of the cul-de-sac circle, and such that if the house was shifted a bit one way or the other, there'd be that much less encroachment that might occur from, from their efforts. So I'm, I guess I'm leading up to, I'm in support of this. I think that especially the location of the house, as close as it is already, but also, again, similar situation as most of the rest of the properties appear to be on this street, and to accomplish what the applicant is looking to do, there is really no other way to, to do any sort of reasonable bump out vestibule foyer, or whatever we're calling it, without potentially encroaching in, in this setback. So I, I think it's a reasonable use, and I don't see negative effects from it.
Thank you. Going clockwise, Mr. Boucher?
I would agree with Mr. Shaw. Again, I'm in favor of the application, and I think, you know, again, in general, properties that we see on cul-de-sacs are always a challenge. It's just a fact of what it is, and, you know, we, we've seen it and we'll continue to see it, you know, from, from this to driveways to all kinds of, you know, additions. So I, I think it's not something that's uncommon, and hopefully, you know, you'll get to see, Mr. Lionel, you'll get to see some of the challenges that we see with the cul-de-sac lots. And this one seems to me to be, for me anyways, and I haven't been here long, as some other folks have, like Mr. Curry, but this, this application here is not as challenging as some of the other cases that we've heard. So again, I'm in support of the application as it stands.
Ms. McKay?
I concur. When I look at the shape of the lot, it's an odd shape, and yet, it seems like it's a logical thing to do. It's not encroaching on either side, so it's not going to affect a neighbor. It's coming up just a few feet into the setback. I don't see any logical reason not to do it. And then if I was to speak solely as a female up here, you know, the word closet, you know, that works. So, I mean, it just, it makes, again, logical common sense. You're going up, use the space, add a closet, I'm, I'm right there for the closet. So I think it's in keeping with what any of the other neighbors might want to do. They're trying to improve the home and not only improve the safety of it and the aesthetics of it, the actual use of their home. So I think... So I think this is a win-win. I'm absolutely in favor of this.
Thank you.
I just want to speak on behalf of the men, though. I think we also can very much appreciate additional closet space, so we can.
It just, you know, it's, it's like a girl thing, I'm sorry.
I get ten percent of closet space at my house.
Well, yes. Now, how it's used is a different story.
Yeah, well, my house was built in 1890. Closets are like foreign to my house, so yes, this is.
All right, thank you. My, my thoughts are, as Mr. Lionel, when reading the application, looking at what we have and visiting it, I too was envisioning like a one-story vestibule. I agree that the two-story is a different look. Actually, right around the corner from my house on Shady Lane, there was a two-story that then added pretty much exactly what's being proposed here. It was set further back, so there are no variances. It would just went up, the fellow did it himself. I would concur. It gave a completely different look to the house. But when it was finished, it matched the rest of the house and it, 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 it was a different look, but it wasn't a bad look. It was, it was a different look. I mean, I guess it was a good look. I, I think it probably goes more to how it's finished off, so I, I, and one other thought I throw out is when I, before I site walked this, I'm saying, oh, this house is for, it's kind of a big lot. It's cul-de-sac, but it's situated up front. But, you know, there's a topography, you know, it's going uphill and that's probably why it was pushed to the front because of driveway needs. Kind of does speak to a special condition of the lot, which put the house up front in the first place. So my feeling is I'm supportive of it. I don't think it's going to look, it's going to be a different look to the house, but I think the two houses, as Mr. Shaw mentions, to me, look, it's going to match those two. I don't think it's going to be really any closer than those two. I don't think it's going to be out of character of the neighborhood. And I, I forgot to mention, you know, when Mr. Boucher in his comment talked about he hasn't been here as long as me, I should have mentioned before Attorney Preunier left that when he said he was doing that for 50 years, that makes me feel young.
He did say almost 50.
Oh, almost, okay. I still feel young. You could say almost 40 and I would feel young. So I'm in favor of it as it's proposed. And I think we, we, we're having a, more than a majority here. Would someone like to make a motion or Mr. Shaw?
Okay. I'd like to make a motion on behalf of the owners, John Leatherman and Lucy Rodriguez. Address is six Gagnon Circle. The request is for a variance to encroach four feet into the 20-foot required front yard setback, excuse me, to construct a seven-foot by eight-foot front entrance vestibule. And this is in the R9 zone, excuse me. The variance is needed for the applicant's proposed use of the property, given the special condition of the property. Of most note is that the home, while on a relatively large lot, is placed also relatively close to the front of the property and it is on a cul-de-sac, on the arc of the circle in the cul-de-sac. And furthermore, the entrance, existing entranceway already is pretty much at the smallest distance from that arc that the property is set at. So to basically replace the front entrance and add some additional structure here, it's nearly impossible to add anything without some encroachment into this setback. It was noted in the application also that at least from the pavement, the setback will still be greater than 20 feet and while technically we still do judge this to the property line, I think most would agree that there's very little likelihood that the pavement will be brought all the way to the edge of the property line in some future. I believe it is within the spirit and intent of the ordinance in terms of allowing the property owner to, to have a modest addition and enhancement to the home as proposed. There was no testimony regarding effects on property values of surrounding parcels, but there's no indication that there would be any negative or adverse effects. It's not contrary to public interest and substantial justice would be served. The other thing I wanted to note is that this, this property is also very similarly set to the front of the property, much like some of the surrounding properties on this street and especially number three and number five Gagnon Circle, at the end of the circle that are, that do have frontage on the arc of the, of the cul-de-sac itself also. So with that, I'd like to again note this is a motion for approval of this variance.
Seconded by Mr. Boucher. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, a show of hands. That's five, nothing, so your application is approved tonight. As I mentioned earlier, there is that 30-day window of appeal. You're welcome to get started right away. I would advise caution, you never know. If you were to pour concrete and we get a, a rehearing request, wouldn't make any difference to us whether you've already started. So I'd exercise caution, but you can go as you wish. All right, with that, I'd like to close the public meeting on case number three. Did you keep going?
Yeah, I think yeah.
Yeah? Is that a yes? Okay. I'd like to open the public hearing on case number four. The address is four to six Leighton Street. The owner is Roger and Megan Reinhardt. The request is a variance to exceed maximum driveway width, 24 feet permitted, 22 feet existing on the left side, an additional 15-foot wide driveway is requested on the right side, making the total width 37 feet. This is in the RB zone. Hi, good evening. If you could give us your name and address for the record.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and rest of the board. My name is Roger Reinhardt and the address in question is four to six Leighton Street in Ashland.
Hi, would you like to walk us through your application?
Excuse me. The application is a request of variance to exceed the maximum driveway and to add a 15-foot driveway to the right of the property. It is a two-family property. We feel the, the addition would serve purposes on, on many fronts. First and foremost, it would increase the safety and the welfare of the surrounding area. Leighton Street itself is, is quite narrow and parking is an issue. Being a two-family, we feel with that additional driveway to the right would serve to, to take cars off the road and safely have them on the property and get away from pedestrians. We think the aesthetics of having that would improve the, the surrounding area and as a direct result then would improve the, the surrounding property values as well.
All right, thank you. Any questions for the applicant, Mr. Lionel?
I don't have a, a problem with the application, but you, you do understand you have to work with the city on an additional curb cut?
Yes.
So I'm assuming that if this were approved, the one unit on the left is parking on the left and the other unit is parking on the right. Okay. Any other questions for the applicant? I don't think there are. You can have a seat. Is there anybody else to speak in favor of this request? We do have a letter on file in favor. I'll summarize it here. It is from Lucas Zund.
Lund.
Lund. Oh, Lucas Z. Lund, thank you. And he lives at eight Leighton Street. And in summary, he is supportive of the driveway in that it'll not be a problem and it'll match the driveways on the other side of the street and, so he's supportive of that. Is there anyone with questions or concerns about the proposed second driveway at four to six Leighton Street? Ma'am, if you would like to come to the microphone and give us your name and address for the record? Let us know what's on your mind.
My name is Celeste Mignault. I live at seven Leighton Street. Part-time, actually, but I've been an owner of the house since recently. My father passed away. I have four brothers and we have been there at that resident for over 50 years. My brother was kind enough to write a, a letter of rebuttal, so I would like to include this for the record if I could.
Sure. If you, would you like to read it to us or hand it out to us?
I can, I can read it. I'll kind of go through it as quickly as possible. It's, it's a one-pager, but it's small print.
Okay, so at seven, you're right across the street.
We're directly across the street, yes.
Okay.
So we have, me and my family have resided at seven Leighton Street for, since 1967. We, my brother continues to live there and, I'm just trying to go through this a little quicker. We have no problem with extending the driveway to the left two more feet from 22 to 24 feet as proposed in the application. This will create even more room on that side for four cars plus probably up to six cars if you use the entire left side of the, of the house. Where the previous owner lived, when they lived there, they had up to four cars plus visitors and the like, and we all, you know, used our driveways. We had driveways opposite each other. So in a sense, it was, it was easy to back out of anyone's driveway because there was a driveway there. In this case of proposing a new driveway to the right side of the house with a curb cut, coming out of that driveway, if we're parked on the street, they will not be able to get out of the driveway. So that is the, the, the number one issue. It'll take away parking from the right side of the street because the street is so narrow, no one could ever back out of that. It's not a driveway that'll be parallel or perpendicular actually with it, with another driveway. So, um, let me see, I'm just... "Allowing a new curb cut into the existing sidewalk, there will not be enough room to back out of that area." There's also a telephone pole there, sitting on the corner. The curbs are, you know, six or eight inches high. Parking on the sidewalk is, you know, unreasonable and when a car is parked on the street, there's, you know, eight feet or less for a car to get by. And then to have cars on the right side, I don't even know what the purpose of having another driveway is really because if it's just a two-family and there's enough parking for five to six cars in the driveway that exists, putting another driveway, taking away green space, is just going to make it, you know, very aesthetically unappealing from our point of view across the street. It's going to be all asphalt. So I don't know if anyone's driven by it or seen it, but to take that away, I think, is, is just a detriment to the value of our houses. There's, I don't know the necessity of it and I don't know what the parking would be. Would it be a one-spot, a two-spot, an angle spot? I don't know. And that's a concern and I don't think that's clear. So that's what I have.
Thanks, Ms... Was that Renault, like the car?
Mignault.
Oh, Mignault.
M-I-G-N-E-A-U-L-T.
Thank you, Ms. Mignault.
Thank you.
We might have some questions.
Okay.
Mr. Lionel has a...
It's the comment, there, the proposal was not to extend the, the existing driveway two feet. The, our comment is that the, the ordinance is, say, there's a maximum of 24 feet. That existing driveway on the left side of the property is 22 feet. That's not being touched. The proposal here is to add the, the second driveway, a 15-foot driveway on the right side of the property.
Oh, and not change the left side?
Not change the left side.
That was unclear to me. I didn't know.
Doesn't change your comment really, but I wanted you to make sure that you understood.
Okay.
That's, that's really all, all I, I have to say at this point.
All right. Any other questions? I have a question. So I did drive by my site to look at it. I didn't specifically look at number seven. I was focused on four to six, but I'm curious about what, is there parking on the south side or your side of the street and not on the other side? Is parking permitted on both sides?
Just on the right side of the street.
Just on...
On the south side.
On, on the south side. And, and is, that's not, probably not overnight parking?
No, overnight parking would not be permitted.
No.
And so just to clarify, your point is, well, I guess the application doesn't say to remove a parking space opposite of the fifth, to propose 15-foot, but I, I think, I just want to understand, one of your points is that if this driveway we're in and somebody were parked on the other side of the street from where the driveway is, that would be problematic?
Exactly.
Okay, well, we'll discuss that with the applicant in a moment, I guess.
And when is it, when is it determined as to what the parking lot is or the driveway is for, the number of cars?
Well, I, I don't, I don't...
I mean, how many cars do you need?
I was going to guess it was for two cars. I didn't really have...
It says that in the application.
It does say that.
Two additions.
They're allowed two. They need to have two per unit.
Right, and there's plenty of room on the left side for that. It's been there for over 50 years with, with that number of cars.
That's just the minimum. You can obviously have more if you want.
And you can on the left side as well because the driveway actually goes all the way back to the, to the backyard, to the kitchen area, so...
All right, well, thank you for your comments and hanging there. Was there anybody else with questions or concerns about the proposed driveway? Just Ms. Mignault? Were you okay, sir? You have any questions or concerns? Okay, Mr. Reinhardt, could I trouble you to come back to the mic? And there were some questions there. Let me just kind of tick through them. You know, the, the issue, the concern you might say that was brought up about if there was a car parked opposite of the driveway, that it would be problematic. I can't speak to that. I, I don't know it that close. Also, if you could just clarify maybe the length and width of your proposed driveway and also the idea of, you know, is it necessary with, I guess the other one being there for a long time? So if you could talk to us about that and answer those questions, I'd appreciate it.
I'll try to cover as, as many points as, as possible. I personally don't feel that there's going to be a detriment to the, to the egress in and out of the property. I don't really think the, the telephone pole on the other side will be, will be an issue. The fact that there's only parking allowed on the right-hand side, there is no parking on the left-hand side, bringing the cars off the road and, you know, onto our property is something that I think will enhance the area. We have gone through an extensive renovation of the property. It was in some state. We've gone through a two or three K renovation. We put a lot of resources, myself and my wife, into it to try bring it up to increase the value of our property and, and the, the surrounding area, which will include a lot of groundwork around, so we'll be bringing back the lawns as well. The room on the left, I would debate, again, the, the amount of space that has been, you know, that they think is there. The nature of the plot is, is kind of at an angle, so it doesn't go back straight, straight away. It does narrow, so I don't think we can get as many cars as what, as is, as is being said. Just to specify, so the proposed driveway is going to be 15 feet in wide, you know, going back, I think it's just as much as what two cars would be for the right side, safe, you know, safe away from, from the road front. I think for the most part, so...
Yeah, I think, um...
I don't have any other questions.
Sure, while, while I'm speaking, I'll just, just to clarify, so your proposed curb cut is 15 feet and I'm looking at your map of the proposed driveway. I mean, and I'll just kind of hold it up here, probably hard to see from that distance, but I guess it was my take that the property line on the right kind of angles out, so because 15 feet, you know, that's okay for two Mini Coopers, but anything more than that is going to be really tight. But my thought was it, it widens up there, so that would end up being okay for two cars, but that's just me. But is that your testimony?
That's, that's exactly what we're thinking as well.
Okay.
We would, we were thinking of having a flower bed around the house, improving the, you know, the aesthetics as well and as the... you know, the aesthetics as well, and as the, the natural kind of line towards the right in between ourselves and the brace kind of broadens out, it would give us enough room for two cars.
I didn't really look closely at the left side, because I was focusing on the right, but on, on the left side, what's been there for a long time, how, how many cars does that contain?
It can contain two cars side by side. If you do go all the way up to the front and get cars very, you know, very close together, you possibly could get two cars behind those. But again, that's, you know, access in and out of, you know, reversing cars, kind of playing dominoes with cars if, if, you know, the front cars wanna get out at any particular time. To the left, I think it's Two Leighton Street. It's another multifamily, and there's quite a substantial amount of cars that, where regularly is parked anyway they can, try to fit all the cars in. So, you know, parking is an issue on the street, and we're just trying to, you know, bring less, or, sorry, bring away, you know, from that left-hand side and, and have a little bit more room on, on the right.
And one, one other question, like on the right side, I, I think I remember seeing a fence there.
Yes.
So, it seemed to me, okay, there's a fence, fence is staying, probably not gonna be any issue with cars creeping over into the butters. What's on the left side? Is there a fence there, or is it just kind of a?
For probably twenty feet, there's no fence at the moment, and then a fence starts. So it's just kind of, kind of, no, just, yeah, no fences there. People use it just to push snow during the winter months.
I see. Okay. I'm all set with my questions. I didn't know if anybody else had any Mr. questions for Mr. Reinhardt's response to that. All right, well, thank you. You can have a seat. Ms. Mignault, would you like to address any comments? You're, you're welcome to come back to the microphone and...
I think I just have one question, and that is, how many cars are, you know, typical or what's allowed or not allowed per unit?
First of all, I appreciate your, your testimony tonight. I, I think what I've picked up from Mr. Reinhardt's response is that that existing driveway on the left reasonably parks two cars, and is, he's saying it's challenging to put four cars there. What he's proposing is, I, I think would be a, a comfortable two-car on the left, or nothing changes on the left, and then comfortable two cars on the right. So that's what I've learned here, because I was completely unclear to me before you questioned this about what was going on on the left. I think, maybe Mr. Falk, could you speak, there, there needs to be a requirement of...
Two parking spaces per dwelling unit.
So they need to have four to meet the code, but, you know, they can have, they can have more. So one point, just to, to follow through on that, is, say if this were a new structure, we have these zoning regulations, there would need to be clear for off-street parking. This is an old neighborhood, an old street. A lot of times, there's, things are what they are, and we have this lot that looks like it's been like this for fifty years plus with this one driveway. Sounds like it doesn't quite meet four cars on the left, but it's just the way it is. It's not like there's a violation. It's just kind of grandfathered the way it is. It's one of the things I, I think, it's why we're here. We talk about these matters and kind of, we, we decide, is it reasonable or not for the request? I don't know if I've answered your question, but I'm just kind of maybe clearing things in my head.
No, that's fine.
So what was your comment or question, and maybe I did or didn't answer that?
Well, I was just wondering what the, what the zoning or what, what the rules are per, per unit.
Two per unit.
It is a, a two-family, and the other houses on the street are basically, you know, single-residentials.
Yeah.
So, I, I guess I was just wondering how many cars you really need or expect.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't, I wouldn't say for family and friends, we have to build a driveway, you know. If it's sufficient for the two-family where it stands now, or if it could be extended further back in the driveway area, you know, I, I, I don't know. I think it would be sufficient. Instead of putting asphalt in places...
Instead of green space.
Yeah.
Yeah. Thank you for that. Are, are there any questions for Ms. Mignault? All right, with that, I'll close the public hearing and, and open the public meeting. Thoughts on the matter? I'll look at you first, Ms. McKay, because I'm going the other way.
Thanks for that. Actually, I live in this neighborhood. I use Leighton Street a lot. And the house on the corner always has numerous cars parked there. This particular request, when I viewed it, there is what appears to be just dirt, and it looks like people are using it to park on now, because if I live there, I would park on, on there to take my car off the street. Because you need to have two cars on this side, two cars on this side to meet code now for each unit, I understand the logic behind the need for this. I also know that this street is extremely small, and when there's cars parked on the one side coming down, you hold your breath as you're driving to make sure that your car's gonna fit. And I drive a Jeep, and I'm like, mm, so it makes me nervous. I actually think this makes logical common sense to want to put the driveway there. I know when you back out of, if you were to back out of my driveway, there's a driveway pretty much across from me. Maybe there's so much feet that isn't, and it can be a test of your driving skills to kind of get your vehicle out, especially if another one is parked right there. That impediment won't be here. It will, but it won't, and so, understanding Mrs. Mignault's issues about backing out and about the tight street, I think that it makes more sense to have the driveway than to not have the driveway. And so I'm in support of the application.
Thank you. Maybe I'll jump in myself. I, I appreciate the thought that, I, I like green space more than asphalt. Let me just start. There's no question I do with that. The trade-off here with me is, I, I, I believe if the driveway were on the right-hand side, after hearing this testimony, and I, I'm feeling that four cars on the left is a tight four-car, and those driveways don't work all that well with the domino effect. I think that two on the left, two on the right is, is a nicely workable design. The trade-off there is if that happens, you know, you have less green space, and I can see where that would impact the person across the street looking at it, and I appreciate that. I'm feeling support for this application because I, I think on this tight street, it's a reasonable design to, to make it work better for the long-existing house. You know, it, it is a caution, the fact that there's not a driveway across the street from this proposed right-hand one if it were to go in. Those folks are gonna have to be careful backing out and not hitting the cars behind it, but is that really hard or not? Kind of hard for me to speak to. I mean, it may or may not be, probably is gonna be a bit of a challenge, but I, I guess I've struggled with saying not, not supporting this because of that potential problem of a car across the street making it difficult for it to back out here. I guess I'm going with the idea that Mr. Reinhardt lives there, he knows the car is parked there, and he's thinking it's gonna be okay. I'm feeling okay with that. So I'm in support of the application as it's proposed. That's where I'm at. Somebody from the other side, Mr. Shaw?
Yeah, I think ultimately it's kind of, I think Ms. McKay made the point. It kind of comes down to the, you know, kind of a trade-off, and I think the ultimate, I think, safety benefit of having less cars parked on the street potentially than, by having the driveway. And I realize that even that being said, you know, there's could be arguments made for there might be more backing out, but then again, it's kind of, to your point, the other driveway, I think, is, it's, by having that stacking kind of thing, I think there's much greater issues potentially where you have, when you have the car jockeying and that kind of stuff, the domino effect, you might have even more, you know, kind of people backing on and off the street just to move cars around. So, I think in the net, the net benefit overall though is still a, a safer solution by having additional driveway.
Thank you. Mr. Boucher?
I appreciate, you know, the testimony that we had with, with Ms. Mignault, and I can appreciate that. I, I think, you know, when we look at these older neighborhoods, you know, the traffic and the amount of cars per families was very different, right, when these neighborhoods were exist, you know, were, were developed years ago or came into existence. But, you know, again, times move on and, and we, we try to adjust to them. Again, I do appreciate the fact that it is a tight street. I mean, Granite Street's the same way, and, you know, that's a challenge sometimes to go up and down. So, you know, when I went to take a ride on the neighborhood, that was interesting. So, again, I think the fifteen-foot wide driveway, as I was looking at that, you know, a lot of times we see ten-foot wide driveways. So, you know, I was thinking, yeah, there could be cars across the street, but a fifteen-foot wide, for me, would give me a better chance of getting in and out without having to do a three-point turn kind of into the driveway. And what I saw in Granite Street, or was on the street, was, it was interesting. It was like, it was all this parking, and I, those cars parked in front of the driveway. So I'm thinking, oh, people who live there are parking in front of their own driveway, which is no really rule against it, right, unless you're blocking somebody else's driveway. So, you know, that could be, this could be the case here too. So, you know, I'm looking at, you know, what, what's the challenges that the homeowner has. So again, it's a trade-off, and, and I understand that. And then ob, obviously, you know, when we talk about driveway, sometimes we talk about who's most impacted. So the neighbor across the street's impacted, but also the neighbor to the right's impacted, but we do have a lot of support from that neighbor, and his driveway is right on the same side too. You know, sometimes we see some, you know, sometimes people are concerned with that conflict, right, of coming in and out the same, that same area. So, again, I think it's, again, a, a, a balance issue, and, and in this case, I think I would, I am in support of the application as, as it stands.
Mr. Lionel?
I agree that adding this driveway would most likely cause cars to be pulled off of the street into the driveway, because with the existing driveway, there, for, at two cars per unit, there really isn't enough space for reasonable parking. I mean, yeah, you can, you can fit four cars in, in that space, but you have, you still have to shuffle them. So what's most likely happening is that at least one of the tenants is, is parking on the street a lot of the time, so this would pull the car off the street. I agree with Mr. Boucher that a fifteen-foot driveway opening gives some room for starting the turn, and I, I don't think that the tightness of the street for pulling out onto the street or into, into the driveway is sufficient of a problem to deny the request.
All right. Anybody like to make a motion? Mr. Lionel?
Okay, this is only my second motion, so we'll give it a try here. Okay. I can make a motion to approve a variance requested by Roger and Megan Reinhardt. The address is four to six Leighton Street. This is in the RB zone, code section one ninety dash one ninety-two C. The request is to exceed the maximum driveway width of twenty-four feet permitted. There is an existing twenty-two feet on the left-hand side, and the request is to create an additional fifteen-foot wide driveway on the right side for a total width of thirty-seven feet. The variance is needed to enable the applicant's proposed use of the property. It's a two, two-family house, and the requirement from the city is two cars per unit, given the special conditions of the property. The benefit sought by the applicant cannot be achieved by some other reasonable method. It's within the spirit and intent of the ordinance. We have testimony from an adjoining neighbor that he would improve the, the look and, and value of surrounding parcels. It's not contrary to the public interest, and we believe that substantial justice would be served.
Thank you. A second to the motion. Mr. Shaw, any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, a show of hands in favor of the additional fifteen-foot wide driveway? So, Mr. Reinhardt, your application is approved. You've probably heard me say before about the thirty-day window of appeal. I advise caution on that one, but for now, you're all approved. With that, I'll close the public meeting on case number four. Anybody like to take a break? Yes, okay, we're gonna take a five-minute recess here, folks. Five minutes, little bathroom break, and then we'll re-adjourn. Five minutes with a bathroom break and then we'll re-adjourn. And I'd like to open the public hearing on case number five. The owner is Ruben Nashua, doing business as Bernie and Phil's Furniture. The applicant is Viewpoint Sign and Awning. The address is 243 Daniel Webster Highway. And the request is a variance to encroach eleven feet into the twenty-five-foot setback to an intersection off Spitbrook Road to replace an existing ground sign with a new ground sign. It's a general business owner. Hi, good evening. If you could give us your name and address for the record?
Sure. My name is Scott Spalding. I'm with Viewpoint Sign and Awning, located at 35 Lyman Street, North Borough, Mass. I do have a representative from Bernie and Phil's. Allow him to introduce himself in case you have any questions for him pertaining to the property and day-to-day operation.
All right. Hi, good evening.
My name's Steve Mobilia, sixty-one Tennyson Ave, Nashua. Still a manager of Bernie and Phil's.
All right. Thanks. Welcome, Mr. Mobilia. And we're back to Scott Spalding at the mic.
Okay. So, we are proposing to replace an existing freestanding sign that's been there for a long time before Bernie and Phil's actually owned the property that faces Spitbrook as you drive. There's been a long-time desire to orientate that sign to where most of the traffic flows, the Daniel Webster Highway. We, in looking at it, I saw that we met the criteria of setback, size, shape, everything. But, we did miss that there was a, the twenty-five set book, twenty-five-foot set book for the intersection, for the setback. That is not possible for us to do here. I guess at one time, some of their land was taken away to add a lane there. So, my assumption is the existing sign there now is what I would call illegal nonconforming. So, this is the only way we can do this sign is to ask for relief of the twenty-five-foot setback. If we were to meet that code, we'd be pushing the sign back up into the building, up into their planter, basically. And you'd never see it from, I believe, heading north on Daniel Webster Highway. So, we're asking for some relief. We don't believe that this would cause any harm to the traffic or flow, that it would block you out because you're really, as you pull out there, you're not looking right. You can only, you can only go right or go left this way. So, it's not like somebody's coming this way and, you know, would hurt anything or harm anything.
All right. Let me jump in with a quick question.
Sure.
Is your proposal to rotate the sign ninety degrees from what it is now?
Correct. So, it's facing Daniel Webster, so you can see it coming north and south from Daniel Webster.
Okay. Because right now...
More like forty-five degrees because it's sort of at an angle now, right?
I, I don't...
It's not correctly facing Spitbrook? Well, it's not facing Spitbrook and it's not facing Daniel Webster Highway. It's sort of at an angle between the two.
I guess you could, you could argue that. It's kind of weird, however.
Yeah, it is weird.
It was installed, to be honest with you. It was, it had been there a while and maybe the way the curve cut was before it was taken over made sense. I can't really, tried to do some research on that. We really couldn't, I couldn't find much of that.
I remember when it was Merrimack Wayside Furniture.
Okay. Then you probably know better than me.
Well, I'd say, would it be fair to describe the sign now as generally parallel to Daniel Webster Highway and perpendicular to Spitbrook Road?
Yes.
And you want to make that ninety degrees?
Correct. We want to, if this is Spitbrook and the sign is facing this way and Daniel Webster is running this way, we just want to take one leg and turn it basically this way.
An observation I have is, you know, I, the proposed new sign that we have here in our package, like that's, is that, is this portion of it bigger than the existing sign or is it...
The overall, the overall new sign is fifteen square foot, feet bigger than the existing.
Okay. Because the, a concern I have in looking at the site is like the solid base versus the pole. In the orientation in it, that it's in now, which it wouldn't be, but in the orientation that it's in now, not that you're proposing that, but that's what I see when I go look at it. That would, to me, be, block a lot of you, the walkers coming along the sidewalk because it's, you know, it's...
There's no sidewalk there.
Well, there's a sidewalk on Daniel Webster Highway.
On Daniel Webster Highway, yeah.
And people, I don't think I'm the only one, but I go along that path when I'm on foot, you know. But, to me, that solid base being that close, if we want to say that, to the...
Currently, as the sign is orientated, that would be correct. Because you'd be walking down Daniel Webster and you would see this big mass this way. But, turned how we're proposing it, it would, it would, you would just see the side profile of it. Really, whether there's what I'll call the decorative skirt, if you will, wouldn't make a difference to you walking down that particular sidewalk.
Okay. I, it was hard, I didn't envision or...
If I'm understanding you correctly.
Yeah. I think, I think you're understanding me. And I think what you're saying is, in the ninety-degree orientation, what do you call the decorative skirt? Your testimony is a decorative skirt would not cause any visual blockage that would impair pedestrian safety in any way?
No, not at all, especially where we're putting it. I assume you have this, this here?
Yes, yeah.
Okay. So, if you look at it and the side, it looks like, looks like there's a sidewalk all the way around here, looking at this.
I thought there was. I...
Yeah, there is. But, I mean, what, where it is, it's still setback far enough. I guess I'm trying to understand what would be, I mean, are you, what is your real concern that this would, would...
My concern is that like if there was a post versus a decorative skirt.
Correct. You could see through it.
You could see through it. And the fact that, you know, you're, I know it's legally nonconforming now, but it's also a post that you can see through. But, when you have that solid skirt, for folks coming down there, it would, you'd have a better view shed looking right through there. Really, I think if the, if you rotated the sign ninety degrees and had a post like you do, it would almost be no different in terms of view blockage. But, with that decorative skirt in either orientation is going to block quite a bit. Because I guess I'm also saying that when I, using your graphic here and I'm seeing...
I don't know that's a hundred percent scale with the little guy sitting there, standing there. It's close, but that's, that's a five-foot, four-inch man, as I scaled it on the way up here. Just for relevance, you know.
Well, I guess just my, again, getting back to decorative skirt, to me, when it's close to the intersection, I'm concerned about blocking the view. And what is your thought on, is that decorative skirt mandatory? Is having a post...
It's not, it's not mandatory. If it's a real sticking point and concern, we could probably come up with. We're really trying to make the sign as a statement as well. And we were trying to make it as decorative and nice as you could. So, it wasn't your typical, how do I put, you know, metal on a stick, if you will. We're trying to make something elegant and nice, really. But, if you, if you strongly feel that that is, you know, a public safety issue, we could try to come up with something else and eliminate that and give you the see-through. I kind of like it. I think it looks nice. I can't say that, I'm quite understanding where the public safety comes in. I, I mean, are you worried about people not being able to see it? That someone's going to hit them if a car was coming on the curb or someone could hide behind it? And I'm not being, you know, I'm being serious. I'm just trying to understand exactly what your concern is.
Cyclists like me use a sidewalk when maybe we're not supposed to, kids on skateboards. And that is high velocity coming down that hill, going around that corner.
Fair enough.
That's just my experience, but maybe I'm the only one. It's just my thoughts. Hey, I'm just one opinion, but, you know, there's five of us here.
I mean, that, that's, you know, if it's a real concern for the board, I think it's negotiable. We prefer to have it, but, you know, it's, it certainly can go away.
Yeah. That's just my thought, but it's only one. And now it's time for everybody else's important opinion to be heard because...
I'd like to hear, you know, what other people have to say.
Thoughts, everyone else?
On the opposite side of Mr. Courier's comment, if it was see-through and somebody was coming down the hill, could they not, or would they not crash into it easier because it didn't look like anything was there?
I guess, just to clarify, my concern is that coming down the hill, if we want to use that term, it's harder to see other pedestrians or activity on Daniel Webster Highway.
Okay. I, I get where you are now. I thought you were just on the sign, but you're talking visibility to the street, to traffic, to other people. Okay. I get it. I understand the logic now.
That was my thought. Mr. Shaw?
Yeah. I guess I'll raise it in a little bit different way. To me, I have concerns generally about the physical barrier creating the visual barrier when there, this intersection, there is so much going on that my concerns even end up being somewhat in the context of traffic that's coming down the hill to make the right-hand turn, traffic that's trying to make the left-hand turn from DW up onto Spitbrook to head west. And the number of kind of crazy maneuvers that go on in that intersection already. So, anything that is now creating additional visual barrier into that, basically, call it the setback part of the intersection, what's meant to be kind of kept unencumbered from all those visual sightlines. That's where I have concerns about whether it's the decorative skirt or the pole or even just the nature of where the square footage is on that sign and how much of a wall it kind of presents in the mix of this intersection. So, I think it affects, can affect pedestrians and bicyclists and anybody else that's basically kind of on, you know, kind of not in a vehicle, let's put it that way. But, I'm concerned about just the effect on, on the vehicular traffic as well.
Okay. I, I guess I would comment, looking at where the sign is, I'm not, I'm not sure how this would really affect vehicle traffic. I understand what you're saying about the skirt and how you might think that might be an issue. I do not, I guess, looking at my top view, you pull up, you're at a, at a traffic light. You can take a right-hand turn or a left-hand turn. I don't really see how the sign itself is blocking traffic at its proposed location. If there were, if this was, if this was something where you had to worry about looking at oncoming traffic coming the other way, I could maybe see it. But, the, the north side is way on the other side and you can certainly see that. So, I don't, I don't see the sign itself as, as blocking traffic, in my opinion, doing my drive-bys and walk-bys and visuals of it. The skirt issue, I can understand. Like I said, that's certainly negotiable. If that's an issue for the board, we can get rid of it.
Well, I guess, maybe I'll just add a little more. Not, I'm not saying it's a complete hang-up for me, but oftentimes around the holidays, Daniel Webster Highway heading south backs up all three lanes in front of Bernie and Phil's. And so, the traffic coming down Spitbrook on the two right lanes that both make a right on a red light as well, because you can make a right on red, cars coming down the hill, or I should say, well, I know this happens, I do it. You're looking to the right as much as you can to see whether the right lane on Daniel Webster Highway south or the middle lane is more open. Because if the right lane is open, because people are stacked up going into McDonald's, cars try to cut over to the middle lane of Spitbrook Road so they can make a right-hand turn and get out into the middle lane of Daniel Webster Highway. And also, the opposite happens. Sometimes folks making the left like to get into the post office area, back up the left and the middle lane. But, the right lane is a straight shot because people are pulling into Louis Louis and McDonald's. And so, now cars are jockeying to get in the right-hand position. So, coming down the hill, I find drivers always careening to look to the right to optimize and make the traffic flow. And to me, that skirt is, is a big barrier there. And, and of course, once the traffic starts to get, even on a, you know, on a red light, people then start cutting through Bernie and Phil's, you know, to cut around. So, it's just my observation that that skirt and that that visual barriers, to me, does inhibit the car traffic as well. I didn't state that the first time, but that's...
I, I think I understand. I mean, like I said, it certainly could be, I'm sure the owner would be okay with us getting rid of it if that's a contingency, if it were to be approved.
Ms. McHale?
I'm going to echo what Mr. Courier just said. Thinking about it, and you don't have to go down that street on the holidays. Just go there on a Saturday.
Oh, I've been there.
Oh, my. I mean, it's one of the reasons why I hate going down there because the traffic is so bad. But, that skirt is going to be a huge impediment for me. Because when you do, you, it's a sightline. When I look at the sign as it is now, I just automatically know that I can see through. And I can see, I can't see through here. So, that's like a blinder for me. And that would be, yeah, that's going to be a game changer for me.
Okay. We, we can get rid of it and leave it open?
It's, it's just safety and visibility and he's right. You're always planning ahead. It's that short-term planning that people automatically do with their brains. And you're going there. You're already turning as you're coming up because you want to see where you have to go. And having this, I can't see where I have to go. So, it makes logical common sense to avoid that impediment. That might cause accidents, actually. Because if somebody doesn't see it, somebody is, yeah, that's a safety issue for me.
Like I said, we, we would freely omit that.
Thank you.
You would like a re, you know, redesign?
Well, let me just keep, Mr. Boucher and Mr. Lionell haven't had a chance to express their thoughts and I just didn't want to not have that valuable input.
I mean, I, I agree. There's, there's a lot going on in that section. And when those people come downhill, and I'm, I'm pretty good at timing myself and getting myself into a slot, right? So, so if I can't see around that corner, I'm not going to be able to make my decision quicker than I want. Unfortunately, that's just the nature of this, you know, we talk about what the busiest intersections are in Nashua. I mean, this is that, one of the, one of the top of the list, right? And I usually go to Tingsboro in reverse direction if I'm going to the mall. But, sometimes I have to go down here. So, the only thing, when I looked at this, I thought of two things. I did think of the skirt. Your design is definitely very nice. I mean, there's no, there's no doubt about that. And of course, you know, with the single pole design, right? There's more of that free-flowing, you know, it's more, you can see through. And I was just wondering, again, it may, it may not look right. A, can you do a single pole? Or is it really the structure requires that you have two, two, two steel beams in there to hold it up?
At this size, I could not pass engineering with one pole. I do not believe we could look into that, but...
No, no. And I think that you'd have to go to something that's probably twice as big.
So, how I, you'd kind of achieve that is you'd have to do two poles close together, reinforce them, and then you sort of got to wrap them. And so, if you could imagine this, you have the four, if you look at the four, what I'm calling where the panels break, and you got rid of two on the side, then maybe we could do that. We'd have to build it almost like this reinforced goalpost structure. Actually, ran into the same thing in Weymouth with a board and they didn't, they, they wanted us to narrow it down. And there were issues with the, I'm digressing a little bit. That can be done. But, then what I wind up with there is this, because of engineering, the structure that's there, if I left it open and we didn't wrap it and make it decorative, you, nobody would like the look of that.
Right. Because you've got to...
It'd kind of look like a spaceship.
It'd kind of look like a spaceship at that point.
It was just a thought.
Yeah, no, it's a good thought. It's a good thought, actually. If I could pass engineering, I mean, physically, we could do it and it'd be okay, but I'd still have to have some sort of a skirt. My guess is, without running the calculations, that you, if you took away the two side panels, you know, the two smaller sections, I mean, if you kind of just visualize that and just see the one center one, that's what you'd wind up with. Then it could probably be done. I'd have to over-engineer the rest of it, right?
Halfway up the hill on Spitbrook on the right side going halfway up, there's a plaza there, and even though the sign is narrower than this, maybe it's, again, two poles that they've just wrapped individually. And then the idea, again, I think with that was, again, you can see through, so, you know, even though it's a sign, not at a corner, but the idea is people can kind of see traffic, you know, trying to come in and out.
We could certainly do that.
So, and I know that aesthetically, this is really kind of the look, but again, I would, I would say that, especially at that corner, I would kind of be a little concerned or would maybe suggest that. The other thing that also kind of came to my mind is just the fact that, believe it or not, what I was thinking more of is, I'm coming down that hill, or I'm there, I keep thinking of some LEDs that are so bright, like at night, that's almost like distracting, you know? So, I know, you know, again, that was more kind of, I'm not saying that yours is, I'm just saying, in my mind, because this is really close to the road, I'd be coming down or I'd be there, and I've got like a, you know, one of your, one of your message boards is really bright, right? So, you know, and again, I know that there are certain ordinances that we have that have to be followed.
Correct. We're following the, we're not here for a variance for EMCs because they're allowed by code.
Right.
Three lines of text, and they're, they can, I can't remember how many minutes they can change.
Yeah, second, right.
Pardon me? Five-second rule, they can't flash, animate, blink, and...
So, again, I'm not saying that that's a problem.
But I'd like to answer your question on that, because that really comes down to the quality of board that the client purchases. The, we, I'm not gonna name names or name brands, I don't feel that's right to do, but I can tell you the quality of the board they're getting, a good LED manufacturer, it all goes into how you program these things. Adjust the brightness for, obviously, you want these brighter during the day, and it's not really good to blind people with these things at night either. So, you don't, so the good LEDs, you program them and adjust them for those light levels to come down, almost in the same way a high-end TV does. You turn the light up in your room, it gets brighter, you know, you turn the light down, it gets a little dimmer, so it's not this. So, they, that's how this particular board would work, but just to kind of address that issue, not that we're necessarily here for that.
Yes, I understand that, and I guess, the point I was making was, I guess I wasn't really focused on the skirt, I was also thinking about, you know, the visual and what people are looking at, and you want to advertise your business, and you should. That's really the goal of all this, is to attract everybody to Bernie Phil's. And I'm just looking, again, we're more and more concerned about this, really the safety of that intersection. I'll also know that, note that, that in years, you know, the past years, that intersection has gotten bigger, so there's been, of course, so that sign was...
It was conforming.
Was conforming one time, but there was extra lanes added there, so...
It's, yeah, we'd love to conform to the bylaw and not be here right now.
Right.
But we really have, I looked at this literally, you know, five ways from sun, you know, there's not, I couldn't even put it where it is now, having faced, you know, I guess I could move it further up, but the point of this investment is really to...
Right, and the only other crazy option would be to mount it on the building, right? And that's not what you want to do.
No, well, they have that big corner's glass there, and that would be pretty tacky. I mean, you have a sign up the road that is pretty much pressed up against a building right now because they have no other choice.
Right.
And it doesn't look very good.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Mr. Lionel?
Yeah, generally, my concern at that intersection is how many people are gonna run the red light. It's a minimum of three, it can be many more than that. Yeah, the, the building itself kind of looms over that intersection, it's very imposing, and the, I agree that the design of the sign, as attractive as it is, would sort of be more imposing and would materially affect traffic. So, I'm in agreement with everybody else who asks that it be designed with at least some sort of visibility through the, through the base. Other than that, I have no comments.
I'm just gonna jump back in and say, what I failed to say earlier is that your proposed sign here is much prettier than the existing sign. I want to get that out. So, I appreciate that, but, you know, that, then we have this, we're all having this concern. I'm sensing that the board doesn't really have an issue with rotating the sign 90 degrees. It's just seeking to not mitigate the view through the intersection. And while you're at the microphone, I didn't know if, perhaps if you could address that, would your preference, what would you think of maybe perhaps a table and kind of go back and come up with a design that your client and you works and maybe you think could not have such a skirt on it?
Absolutely, absolutely. I mean, they would, it would be nice to have, I guess, would we need to come back before you, or are you talking about a continuance, or can we, if we, could we agree that the sign, and I apologize, I've been before many boards, they all work differently. Sometimes they agree in principle with us submitting a new design that you approve, not official, in an official meeting, but I don't know if it can work that way, if you can say you approve the sign with the condition that we have two single poles and the sign is open. I mean, I do have some ideas. What we can do is wrap the poles and put, sometimes what we do is just put some small decorative stone around it and caps, and it looks really nice, but keeps the flow-through under.
I guess my thought on, my humble thought on that question is, here in the city, we've had a lot of sign problems, and it's been keeping our code enforcement officers and Carter busy. My preference would be to have like a design locked down that we approve.
I understand.
Perhaps like a table to say two weeks out, if you could do it in that time.
Oh, that's fine, yeah, I think that's, that's no problem.
So, Mr. Fox saying that to advertise it, if...
We wouldn't have to re-advertise it, but to send a package out to the board in time, we send the packages out a week before the meeting, so that'll be one week from now.
You'd need it? You'd need, oh, I could probably have something to you in the next day or so.
Actually, a week from today is when we send out the package.
Yeah, no, we could turn this around very quickly.
Okay, if that's the case.
The design, that's, that's no problem. We'll hold a discussion and...
We could go ahead, a table to two weeks from now, and if something does change...
What date does that put us on? I don't have a calendar.
Twenty-third.
What is it? May 23rd is a Tuesday.
And, you know...
Okay, that's, yeah, that's fine, I have a plane to catch to Mexico at 3:00 AM, so that's...
I would say, if we were to table this to that day, I think you'd be at the top of the agenda.
Yep.
Okay, no, that'll, I can make that work.
Remember, we do have that... The rehearing, yeah.
That would go last.
That also goes last, yeah.
Well, I'm sorry.
That was just a...
Another case, not a concern.
So, we would be able to just...
You'd be at the top of the, you'd be number one.
You'd be the first case. Like the first case tonight was table from the meeting.
I understand, okay. Sometimes it works out.
But even if you need an extra day or two, as long as I can, even if you email me something, I can, I can forward it to the board members, even if it's the day after we send it back to them.
Just so I understand, and I, we have a permanent manager that files everything, and she, I don't know if she was emailing everything directly to you or not, do you have an assistant that we were emailing?
Marsha Wilkins.
Marsha Wilkins, so if we sent it to her?
Yep.
It would get to you quickly that way? Okay, all right.
That'd be, that'd be fine.
Realistically, probably send some tomorrow or the next day.
That's fine.
Okay.
As long as we get it by, you know, next Tuesday, and if it's, even if it's a day later, I can still forward it to the board members, and they'll have it. I would just like them to have it, you know, the typical time is a week before, I mean, with all the cases that they have going on, we like to get the package out to them at least a week in advance, so they have time to do their drive-bys and their analysis and...
And again, I mean, I can look further into the single pole option, it's just, I'm sitting here just, I'm not at a computer, I'm not running calculations, I'm not talking to the engineer. Do you think if we could make that work, you'd prefer that, or do you think that, see, I, my feeling is, is that maybe the single pole might not be as good as the two pole as far as visibility? I mean, we could explore both.
Mr....
I'm not asking for a single pole, I just threw that out, just to...
Well, I don't think it's necessarily a bad thought.
But I threw it out to make a point, to make a point that you've got a, you've got a structure there, and you have to meet certain engineering criteria. So, I'm not asking you to do that, I was just pointing that out because the existing sign is a single pole, right? The existing sign is a single pole.
Yeah, you know, I don't think you have...
So, but it's a, it's a different sign. It doesn't hold an EMC as well, so, so the point was, again, it was just thrown out there, it wasn't made to cause any issues with that, just to make a point that, you know, that there's a sign exists there, for anybody who was wondering, why can't it be, well, you testified that there are some engineering functions that have to be performed.
I, I'm testifying that I believe there may be some challenges, but until I sit down and actually try to figure that out, I can't answer yea or nay on it. I guess what I'm asking is, is if we could make that work, would that be preferred?
My personal opinion would be, no, it wouldn't make a difference, because in the end, it's more about the visibility, so...
Okay.
Right. I mean, for myself, I'm not...
I was just trying to work with you, that's all.
Right.
Mr. Shaw?
Yeah, just to try to, I think it might come down to, if one single pole is essentially taking up, kind of blocking up as much kind of visual as two smaller poles, the net difference is not that much. So, I think in, so generally, I think the two pole very well might just be what comes down to be the better balance.
Might be better, yeah. Okay, fair enough.
And I just throw out my opinion too, I agree with that, it's, I'm not saying a single versus a double. I, you know, I'm saying whatever doesn't hinder the sightlines, you know, that's what I'm concerned about, and, you know, the skirt is a big blockage, a single or double, whatever you think works better. Probably agree with that, you know, you know, I'm looking to not have a big skirt there and leave it in your hands from there.
Okay, fair enough. Well, we'll either come back with, after talking to the client, we'll either come back with one or two options, maybe that, that, you know, that you can look at and...
Sure, and, you know, also like, one thing that I always appreciate is like, you know, you have the photograph of, here's what it is looking down Spitbrook Road.
We gave, we did that, you don't have that?
Yeah, no, we do have that, but here's, like, here's the proposed one, you know, right next to it, you know, and you see, you see it's, it's not any worse or better or...
Yeah, it's a little, it's a little hard, because if they were orientated the same, then they'd usually do that.
Yeah.
But where one's facing this way, and one's facing that way. But we did give you a photo posted of it there.
Yes, you did, yeah.
And, you know, those are, you try to be as accurate as you can, but honestly, they're, you know, in all fairness, they're, you know, within 10% of what's really going on in the world when you're superimposing a sign and a photo.
Yeah. All right, Mr. Fox?
The overall width of the skirt is, according to the drawing, is 10 feet 10 inches.
Correct.
So, if it goes down to one pole, that one, that one pole may be with the, you know, with a little base around it, I'm guessing it's gonna be...
Maybe two or three feet.
Yeah, I was gonna say, three feet, four feet anyway, but two poles on the sides, you know, they're gonna be at least two feet each, so...
No, they're gonna be around 12 inches.
12 inches, okay.
Depending how we wrap them and how we decorate them, you know, whether we do stone veneer and caps at the bottom, you know, whether the client wants that or, I'm gonna give the client a few options, basically, and it's really gonna come down to what they, I'm gonna give them options that I think you'll be okay with after our discussion, and then, you know, it's what they want to ultimately, would like us to present to you and pay for this.
All right. Mr. Merdely, did you have anything to add, or were you, were you okay with, since we're in, you know, the public meeting still, was there anybody else with an interest in this case, favor or against, or you're probably here for the two cases beyond it? So, there's no other testimony anyway, so I think we're all set. I'll close the public hearing and open the public meeting. My thought would be to table this, as we're talking about, to the May 23 meeting, are we okay with that?
Yep.
Yes, I'll make a motion that we table this proposed sign at 243 Daniel Webster Highway to the May 23 meeting. It'll be at the top of the agenda, agenda number one, and that'll allow the applicant to consider, I'll just leave it at removing the skirt and trying to consider the sightlines for this very busy corner. So, we'll make a motion to table...
So, we'll be reopening the public hearing, though?
I think it would be prudent to open the public hearing, because we'll have a new design in front of us. Thank you.
Can I second that?
So, that's, actually, that's seconded, that we'll have, table it with a public hearing.
I just wanted to make a comment that, that again, an applicant probably knows that if they run into a problem, if we have to go to, they have to go through a further meeting later on, then that's okay also.
Oh, thank you for clarifying that. Yeah, if you were not finalized on your design, you could simply call or email Mr. Fox and say, hey, let's push it out to the meeting beyond it, that's no problem. You don't need to hurry if you don't have your detailed work done. If you do, we'll be ready for you. If not, we'll see you in four weeks instead of two.
We'll see you the 23rd, I'm pretty sure.
All right.
Thank you very much, thank you.
Okay, I'm just gonna take, just to finish the vote, what we have is a motion to table to May 23, and that's seconded any other discussion on the motion?
Only discussion is, I won't be here for that, just to let you know.
Okay.
Me too.
You won't be here for the 23rd?
No.
Oh, we'll have to talk about, I think we should still table this to the 23rd, because we do have another member. So, thank you for that discussion, any other discussion on it? A show of hands in favor of the table to the May 23. So, we'll see you on May 23.
All right, thank you.
All right, have a good night. And with that, I'll close the public meeting on case number five. Moving along, I'd like to open the public hearing on case number six. The address is 39 Gilman Street. The owners are Joanne La Crotsor and David Crotsor. Their request is the following variances, one, to exceed maximum accessory use area, 40% permitted, 62% proposed, and number two, excuse me, is to exceed the structure height within 10 feet of the property line. Up to 14 and a half feet is proposed to construct a 16 by 24 shed, it's in the RB zone, Ward 6. Is there someone here with this case? Hi, if you'd like to come to the microphone and give us your name and address. If you could pull that down a little to get it lined up.
Good evening, my name is Dave Crotsor, and me and my wife recently purchased the property at 39 Gilman Street in Nashua. We purchased it back in December, so we're fairly new here in Nashua. One of the things is that we were consolidating a lot of items that we had, and some was in storage, and this house was built in 1915. The closets are quite small, so what we came from was walk-in type closets, and now we're dealing with excess items that we need to store. Rather than add more to storage, we wanted to consolidate storage, so we decided that it would be best to place a shed onto the property. The shed has been presented, the area and everything, the size and everything else like that. So, we're requesting two variances on the property, going from 40% to 62% proposed, and also the height is 14 and a half foot tall. One of the reasons it's 14 and a half is because I want a little shelf up the top to put some more stuff that we can store, and that's basically our request.
All right, Mr. Crotsor, am I saying that crots it?
You say it perfectly.
Crotsor, all right. Any questions for Mr. Crotsor? Mr. Lionel?
The application doesn't actually say what's being requested. I'm, yes, there's a shed, but it doesn't specify what the, I guess I saw it somewhere, but be that as it may. When I looked at the property, I noticed that along Ritter Street, there's a very, a tall fence... there's a very a tall fence between your property and the next property up Ritter Street around the corner from Gilman.
Yes.
I couldn't see whether there was any kind of a fence between you and the next property on Gilman Street.
There's a fence between the garage and the property behind us. There's a fence between the our property and the property, the one you just described.
Yeah, okay.
So there's both fences.
And how tall is that fence?
I talked to the neighbor the first day we moved in, so that had to be right about here for, I guess, your call.
So that's a that's a short fence behind the garage because it's a it looks like an eight-foot fence, but on the other other property, which is is higher than higher than normal. Okay. So the variance being requested is there's the height variance and the setback variance. Is that right?
Right.
That's my understanding.
Maximum accessory use area.
Oh, and maximum accessory use area. Why why am I not seeing?
Pretty much a code, code. Basically what.
Oh, oh, it's on on this summary, yes.
He essentially works with the applicant to convert it to what the, you know, specific dimensional things are. The applicant wants to put the shed in. These are the effects that it causes, so.
Yeah, okay, yes. This is this is where I saw it. Yes, okay.
Very good. I apologize. I've been out the last week, and I would have probably gotten the package a little bit more complete. But, you know, the 40% rule, that's something that the board has seen dozens of times over the years. It's just because the size of their house is such, you have 40% of that size, and this is a pretty large shed overall. You know, 14 by 24 is decent size. So they that's why they exceeded the 40%. And, you know, when we saw the drawing of the the profile of the shed, it's being 14 and a half feet high, it's it's that other little rule about the height within 10 feet of the setback, and they're six inches above it and on one side of the shed, and there're a little bit more on the other side of the shed. So I kind of drew it out to see, you know, this the shaded area is the part that's above the height. The rest of it's all fine because it's past 10 feet away. So this is that part of the shed is all more than 10 feet away, so it's okay. It'll go up to 20 feet. So just because of the angle of the shed.
Okay. That's it. Any other questions? I guess I have a comment. From viewing your property from the street, you know, this is what I would call kind of in the back corner. So it didn't seem to be a big deal to me. I didn't know if you had any comment from a butters or not, and not that we need to have that. I was just curious if if and I don't even it's hard to see from the street if there's any impact to any. So I can't make any judgment on that at all. I'd just throw that out to you to if you have any comment on that.
The other comment I can make is that the that particular area is going, I'll show you say this, the former owner's dog favored that area. So I don't see it as being a a loss for the lawn or anything else, so.
Sure. Well, I appreciate that. I don't have any other questions. Any other questions for the applicant? I think we're all set. You can have a seat. I assume you two have your here for the next case. Do you have any comment on the proposal at 39 Gilman? All right, we have no opposition. I will close the public hearing and open the public meeting. Thoughts on Mr. Crotsor's proposed shed? Ms. McKay?
Well, we all know how I feel about closets. So the fact that, you know, they're getting caught with a lack of space, this makes logical common sense. They're going to repurpose the use of the dog, former dog body. And so I think that probably makes logical common sense. I mean, I understand. I no one's here to oppose it, and it doesn't seem like it's going to impede anything. It's only going to help. So I can support this application.
All right, thank you. I'll jump in and say that I'm supportive of it. I'm I'm I would be very sensitive to any of butter comments. We have none. And and I'm gonna take that as they don't care, and maybe it's an improvement also. It is a tight neighborhood. If there were issues with it being close or high or shading somebody's garden, I'd be very sensitive to it. But we don't have any reason. And without I don't have any reason to that there would be a problem there. And so I'm feeling that Mr. Crotsor makes a good point, good use of the shed. So I'm I'm okay with it as proposed. Mr. Lionel?
My only comment, it's a big shed. There's some houses that are smaller than that.
Nice.
But I was looking at the photograph. Looks like there'd been a trampoline there at one point. At least I assume that's what the circular thing is next to the garage. Yeah, I didn't think it was a swimming pool, but it looked like it was a trampoline. Anyway, I I don't have any objection to this.
Mr. Shaw?
I don't either. And the other thing is, if you kind of note on, I mean, the budding properties, well, the budding property on Blossom Street are one of them, number 36. But then kind of look along the basically the back property line there or side property line, I guess it technically would be. There looks like a lot of garages or sheds that back right up to those property lines already and look to be pretty significant sized structures. I'm guessing it probably mostly are garages. But so I think this this lot is actually relatively large compared to a lot of the other lots in the in this general area. It's not, you know, significantly different than like the budding property number 35, for example, but many other ones, it is actually much larger. So I think to all the points made already, I don't think there's any concern with with the way this is going to work out. And I am in support of it.
Thank you, Mr. Boucher.
Same thing that Mr. Shaw just said, and I noticed that Blossom Street, the same issue there. And I think lots are small and percentages are probably higher. And where the shed's going is exactly where the Blossom Street neighbors garage is at. So again, I don't have any issues with it. And and their house is relatively small compared to the ones on Blossom Street. So so again, I don't have any issues with the application.
Somebody like to make a motion? Mr. Lionel? Would you like to go for two?
Okay. I'd like to make a motion in favor of requested variances. The owner is Joan and David Crotsor. Address is 39 Gilman Street. This is in the RB zone, code section 1931. The request is, one, to exceed maximum accessory use area, 40% permitted, 62% proposed. Two, to exceed maximum accessory structure height within 10 feet of the property line, up to 14 and a half feet proposed to construct a 16 by 24 shed. It says 14 here, okay. The variance is needed to get some useful storage out of the the property. Given the small size of the house, there's no other reasonable way of of getting this. It's within the spirit and intent of the ordinance. It's similar to many surrounding properties, and so it shouldn't adversely affect the value of those properties. Nothing contrary to the public interest and would do substantial justice to the property owner.
Motion on the table to approve, second to the motion. Mr. Shaw, any discussion on Mr. Lionel's motion of approval? Seeing none, a show of hands in favor. So that's unanimous. So, Mr. Crotsor, your proposed shed is approved, and you've probably heard me say that there's this 30-day window of appeal. I would exercise caution with that. If you have any questions, you can give Mr. Falk tomorrow. Not good luck with your storage shed. And welcome to Nashua. All right, I'd like to close the public meeting on case number six. And are we good to go?
Yeah.
All right, let's open the public hearing on case number seven. Wyndham Realty is the owner. The sign center is the applicant. It's 295 Main Street. The request, I'll tick through them all. Number one, to exceed maximum number of wall signs permitted. Two are existing. Three are allowed. Two additional wall signs for a total of four. Number two, to exceed maximum height for wall sign, 20 feet is permitted. 22 feet is proposed for the sign on the south elevation, and to exceed maximum wall sign area for Belmont Street elevation. 65 square feet is allowed, 39 and a half square feet is existing, and one additional 39 and a half square foot sign for a total of 79 square feet. Whew. Hi, good evening. If you'd like to give us your name and address for the record and walk us through your application.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. I'm Jay Khan from the Sign Center, and Tony DeLuca, who represents both Bank of New England and Wyndham Realty as owner and operator of the space.
Could I trouble you to spell that last name?
Sure. It's K A H N. And it's Haverhill, Mass.
Thank you. Okay, go right ahead.
Thank you for hearing. It is 295, just south of where we are now. It is the corner of Main and Belmont. We are requesting relief for three items, and we'll need to walk through all three. One is relief for square footage. One is relief for an extra sign, and one is for relief for height on the building. We are in a DH zone, and I wanted to present what was existing on this building before reconstruction. So this is a newly reconstructed building, and all the work was coordinated with the city. And if we want to back through what planning and building had gone through on construction, Tony was part of that whole process. But it was a utilitarian sort of rectangular building with a flat roof. There were four signs on this building as pre-existing in the pre-construction. Three of them are light boxes. So we have Main Street, which had two, the east side. These are 32. All of them were 32 square feet, light boxes. This one is Main Street, right at the corner. This was the canopy, which is 20 inches by 10 feet. This is the sign that faces the canopy, and this is Belmont Street. So that's the pre-existing condition before construction occurred on this building, which was a complete rebuild. With construction, there were two signs allowed by Wright. As you can see now, it is a fully gabled building, two stories, which was part of that ridge line, was pushed up in the conversations with planning and building. That was a request architecturally to raise that ridge line, and that's going to be part of our request for where the signs are positioned on the building. So it was a request. This is not a two-story operation, but it is a two-story building architecturally. And so it went a huge improvement in terms of the aesthetics of the building on this corner, going from a flat-roofed utilitarian building to a full-gabled New England-style colonial building that has gables on the ends. These two signs are just letters, no longer light boxes, that fill in the entrances on Main Street and Belmont. These are there. These are approved by Wright and permitted installed signage. On the south side of the building, driving up Main Street, this sign is not a either a increase for number of signs or for square footage, but it is centered in that gable with those ridge lines pushed up. The height of this sign is now 22 feet above grade as opposed to the 20. So we're asking for two feet of relief for this sign to be pushed up into this gable to match the architecture as designed and, again, as coordinated in the whole planning process of the building. This appeared as designed in all of the original design, with the exception of the building growing on the ridge line. The last one is the back of the building. You have an enormous brick wall back there because of so this is the parking lot, opposite Main Street. And so it is architectural to add some interest to that. It is the fourth sign, and it is the one driving the square footage. So we have a 52 lineal foot, which gets us to the 65 feet that was mentioned in the application and in the need for relief. This could be downsized, but it's sort of what was designed to fit and went through the process, not for permitting, we understand, but in planning and building, this is what was best decided. In fact, there was icons that were in these upper parts of the gable ridges that we removed to become more compliant in the whole process. Because of while the bank is giving up the branding points, they were trying to be more compliant to get this to meet the needs and consistent with the construction that was approved. The old building was over 50 years old. It needed to be gutted to improve the interior operation. The Wyndham Realty invested a million dollars into this property and enhanced, obviously, that corner right down the street on Main Street. It's architecturally pleasing. It is brand-new construction. The objectives of this was to be similar to their other brands and to meet the city needs for the new construction. If you have questions about that process as it went through of where those ridge lines were, Tony was part of all that process as well, both building owner and operator. We don't think we're contrary to public interest. We have no opposition, and there were four signs pre-existing on this building. I do not know where that was relative to we could not find a variance filed. So we don't know if it was no cease and desist or was consistent with code at the time of construction. Little enforcement would be an unnecessary hardship. The only illuminated sign, we went from three light boxes to one. They are characters, dimension characters around the building to work with the architecture. And it the planning process was a collaborative process with the city. We do think it's within the spirit of the ordinance because of the architecture became the dominant piece to build a two-story building that is not a two-story functional building, but a two-story architectural building. We believe substantial substantial justice supports this, and it does not certainly diminish the value. There are other retailers, other banks, CVS, et cetera, that this board must have reviewed with similar conditions. We know that one permit is not dependent on the other, but the conditions are similar for a retail space on two street corners and to merchandise the building with the architecture to optimize the space. So with that, we are open to questions.
Questions? No questions. I guess I have one question, just on that west-side sign on the on the building or proposed west-side sign. I make the observation.
Parking.
The west, yeah, the one in the parking lot. I mean, I make the observation that with the one-way street, I don't think there's going to be anybody seeing that but folks who have pulled into the parking lot and are pretty much there just for the reason. But I think I heard you say that that's what was designed to kind of match the architecture. And I guess I'm not it's just a comment. It didn't seem to be all that necessary to be all that big. But I think you were saying that that's what you like, and it matches the other signs, if I was hearing you right.
Dimensional letters are exactly the same size as the particular faces at North, yes, the north face.
Yeah.
And it is a big brick space. And so, yes, it could be small. And we are certainly open to that through discussion, but felt that it fit, was the architecture that was presented through the whole process, and including an icon that was removed to try and become more compliant.
Okay, thank you. I don't have any other questions. I think we're all set. I didn't know if was there any other testimony in favor? Are you okay with what he's okay?
I'll I'll sentiment what, you know, they said that we did work with them quite a bit and met with them. And, you know, staff was excited to see the look of the new building and thought it looked a nice look to it and really improved that section of Main Street. So we were we're excited to see it.
All right, close the public hearing and open the public meeting. Thoughts on the proposed signs? Mr. Boucher?
It's the testimony really kind of solidified some of the questions I had, so I won't go over those. But my thoughts are, as far as the sign, how it height goes, you know, when you're wrapping against the building, two feet, you would probably see two feet. But I think that on Main Street, again, if you're not looking at it, I don't think you're gonna discern that that's 22 feet over 20 feet. I think you're gonna see a sign that's up there, right? that that's 22 feet over 20 feet. I think you're going to see a sign that's up there, right? So as far as that goes, I don't have any issues with that at all. And then the extra square footage, you know, again, the sign in the back, I think it's, I almost consider the sign in the back, even though it's a signed square footage, it's, it's an architectural point almost more than anything else because it's not really impacting, you know, what we're looking at. It's just really back of the building, and it's, you're only going to see it from the back of the building. So, so as far as that goes, because that's where they're asking for the square footage, I, I am, I'm okay with that. I don't have any issues with that. And, you know, again, I wouldn't ask for smaller size. I think, again, the fact that, you know, the testimony was that they worked with the city extensively, even though we have, you know, decisions to make. There was some work done by removing their, their icon or their trademark, whatever you want to call it. So again, I think it's really more of an aesthetic to break up the space on the back of the building. So again, I have no issues with that. So I find, after the testimony, that this is probably, I'm actually comfortable with it. It's like I, you know, it's, I think it was pretty well thought out and well done. So I have no issues with the application.
Thank you. Mr. Shaw?
Yeah, I'm fully supportive of it. I agree with everything Mr. Boucher just said. You know, I think the height thing, as noted, was part of their working with the city to raise the heights of the roof. And so it's really kind of what brought that sign essentially into non-compliance as far as trying to place it in the right spot. I think having a sign on that back wall will actually be much better. I think that truly, that architectural kind of interest in breaking up a really large brick space will be a net benefit. And, you know, it's a really super simple kind of quote sign, you know, just being the letters. It's, you know, it doesn't, so I think it's just overall a very, very nice thing. Oh, and the other thing I did want to note is that there were the four signs already existing, so it's not even in the end that we're looking at more sign, more total signs than were even what was existing for quite a long period of time. And maybe not the entire time the building was in existence before.
Thank you. Mr. Lino?
I have nothing to add. I would agree entirely with Mr. Shaw, Mr. Boucher. The design is very nice, and I agree especially that on the west, west side, you need something of size, otherwise it looks ridiculous.
All right, thank you.
I concur with my fellow board members. I remember when the building was Bank East. So I remember that building. I think what you're doing and what you have done is yeoman's work. It's very aesthetically pleasing. I agree the sign on the west wall or the back should be substantial because it's just a big blank canvas and it needs something to have visual appeal. So I agree and I support the project. I kudos. Well done. I mean, huge investment, but, you know, on behalf of the city, thank you.
Thanks for the testimony. I'm, oh, I'm favorable to it as it is planned. My only thought was that one west wall, but, you know, hearing the testimony, I'm fine with it. I was surprised, and an awful lot of people asked me, what's going on with that building? You know, when it started to come down, I, well, I don't know. I mean, it didn't come before the zoning board. I was almost going to call Carter to say, well, what's going on there? Because all kinds of people asked me. And after it was going up, I'm like, boy, this is a real improvement over that square thing that was there. And it's a real game changer, all positive for Nashua.
Absolutely.
And I think it's a tasteful set of signs on there, and it, you know, what's proposed here makes sense. I think we're all in favor. I'm going to throw, um, Mr. DeLuca?
Just a quick point. The height is allowed at 20 feet, and they're, you know, a couple feet above that. The D1 zone and the D3 zone, it's a height of 20 feet. But that's really, I think it's more appropriate for the D1 zone because the D1 zone is mostly the, the stores and shops on Main Street, where it's more of a pedestrian look, a pedestrian feel with the wider sidewalks. This part of Main Street where it's D3, it's still some pedestrian, but it's a lot more vehicular drivers. So I don't think the height's going to really make a difference with them. I mean, I think the placement of the signs on the building is proper for the scale of the building, and it should be fine.
All right, I'm going to make a motion on behalf of Wyndham Realty and the applicants in the Sign Center at 295 Main Street. So we have the three requests before us tonight. The maximum number of wall signs, they're asking for four. The maximum height, they're asking for 22 feet. And the maximum wall sign area for a total of 79 square feet. I make a motion to approve this as presented tonight. I believe the board finds a variance is needed to enable the applicant's proposed use of the property, which is a reconstructed bank in concert with the downtown master plan. I think the board finds it's within the spirit of the, and intent of the ordinance to allow these three sign variances. I think the board finds it'll not adversely affect the property or surrounding parcels. I think the board believes that this vastly improved property, if nothing else, will increase, increase the property values of surrounding parcels. Think the board finds it's not contrary to public interest and substantial justice is served to approve this plan as proposed. Is there a second to the motion? Ms. McKay, any discussion on the motion? Show of hands in favor. So that's five, so that's unanimous. So good luck with your, completing your signs. And, and again, there is that 30-day window of appeal. Keep that in mind.
Thank you.
All right, have a good evening. I'll close the public meeting on case number seven. Moving right along, do we have a rehearing request?
Yes.
Yes, we do.
It's kind of a rehearing request. He, he's, actually, the gentleman that sent this letter, he said he sent it to us the day of the meeting. We never got it. He was working with code enforcement on some other issues in the neighborhood. And so we got this letter, it was after the meeting, and we asked him if he wanted this to be just a letter for the file or if he wanted it as a rehearing request. And first he wasn't sure, he just wanted to get his points down, and, and then, then he agreed just to have it as a rehearing request and go with that, so. But most of his concerns and questions were not on the side of the property where the driveway is, so. As, we didn't see his pictures, so.
So I was, I think we're all taking this as a rehearing request. Unless, does anybody have an issue with that? So we'll kind of tick through it as if it's a rehearing request. Maybe we'll just pick through the four points here and see where we're at. Was there any procedural error? This includes improper notice denying someone the right to be heard. I guess we'll go around this way, and I'll say, I, I don't think there was, and I don't think this letter speaks to that, that there was a procedural error or somebody was denied being here, heard, or improper notice. That's my, my opinion. Ms. McKay, what did you vote?
No, I agree. I don't think there was any improper notice or anyone was denied the right to speak.
Mr. Boucher?
I believe so.
No.
And the note from Mr. Shaw, and, okay, Mr. Lino wasn't here, so abstain on that point. Was it an illegal decision? In other words, did the board fail to completely address each of the points of law required for the special exception or variance? Maybe we'll go the other way, say, Mr. Shaw?
Uh, no.
No. Is that, that's a no from Ms. McKay?
No, I'm sorry, I didn't...
That's all right. And I would concur that I think we addressed all the points of law, and I think we came to, I don't believe it was an illegal decision. So, and I, I think again, Mr. Lino, you're abstaining on that.
I'm abstaining on that one. I won't, I won't abstain on the last one, though.
Very well. So moving on to number three, does the request contain, for rehearing, contain any new information not presented or available to the board at the original public hearing? Mr. Boucher, you want to jump in first?
Say no.
No. Ms. McKay?
No, he said he was going to pave, no.
But is, is that really true? I mean, dude?
I mean, I'm not, I'm not su, I mean, he said he was going to pave. If I read the letter, it says that he paved more than he was supposed to.
Well, let me, let me, let me just clarify when I say no. What I mean no is, and maybe it ties in with force, I believe it's no because this is not what we were, his concerns, but his property, and, and we were looking at the other side, right?
Well, that's a...
Go ahead.
I mean, and maybe I'm stepping on a turn or I'm not saying this correctly, but to Mr. C, to Mr. Falk's point, right? When I was looking at this, when I say no, is I'm making a distinction.
To the, the relevant, relevant new information?
Relevant new information.
I think that's kind of like clarifying. It is, there is new information here, right?
But it's not relevant.
It's not relevant for the case. I think that's what you're trying to...
Thank you very much for clarifying that. That's my point. Yes, it's not relevant in my...
People can always indicate something that wasn't heard or discussed at the meeting, but whether or not it's relevant or not, I mean, he could say, hey, I wore blue socks yesterday. Well, you know, that doesn't really matter as far as the case goes, so.
So no means I don't believe there's any relevant information, new information.
I guess, Mr. Do you want to jump in?
I'd say the same thing.
I, I guess, I, I was thinking yes, but I'm a bit confused, and maybe you folks can help me out. And so there's a point where he said, as, as of last night, covered the newly paved area. And, and I thought, oh, he just did it last night, which was af, after we came to a decision on this? But maybe he's not saying that. I didn't know how...
No, he testified during the meeting that he had done that before our meeting.
Yeah, he did.
So that, this is, so this is really, because this letter supposedly was supposed to come at the time before our meeting, so this is really before our meeting. So this is, and he did testify, he did say that he did that.
Okay.
It's actually in the application.
Right.
All right.
Yeah.
Okay. So thank you for clarifying that. And I guess the other thing I thought could be new information, but maybe I've got this wrong, is what this letter is telling us is that there's this, this fella has a runoff problem because what he's saying is, it's paved over, now it's been raining, and it's been running off on my soil and my foundation. And I didn't know if this applies where Mr. Falk said this is, this is the other side that he's paved over, or does that apply to this? Because if, I thought what I was reading in this is, now that there's been some time that's gone by, there's this recognition that this paving is causing a problem. And so I, I, I think that's new information that's come to light to me, but maybe I'm wrong. I'm just wondering what anybody else takes that point when he says that it's causing erosion on his property.
Again, my opinion is, and if I recall correctly, I, and looking at the property and the pictures, I think, again, this is the, the, this is the, on the other side of the property. So this is, this is, I think, an issue that solely exists there.
Okay. And the paving that was done, we're looking at, was over here, okay.
The Vine Street area.
Yeah, right.
So what, just so we can have on the record, the paving that was done that we discussed was only on the Pine Street side.
Right, right.
Vine, Vine, yes. And this letter here is referring to the, the central street side, of which there was no delta involved in this.
Right. And, and again, my position why, again, Mr. Shaw said it correctly, was, this is not, not that it's not relevant, but it's not relevant in this particular place for me because it's, again, we didn't make decisions on, on that side of the property.
Okay. So I answer that question by a no. There is new information, but it's not relevant to this. And thank you for helping me understand that, to answer that for me. Number four, is there anything that could, would cause the board to make a different decision? Mr. Lino?
Actually, I'm, I'm going to abstain on that one.
Oh, okay. All right, very well. Mr. Shaw?
I'd say no.
No, again.
Ms. McKay?
I don't know. Based on the information that we first heard and what we did, I guess, no, but his issues are pretty substantial.
You're, you're looking at me, and I guess what I, I was coming here tonight from reading this saying, there is new information, this is substantial. But on the other hand, what I'm understanding here is this whole letter in its entirety is on the side of the property that there's been no change to. It's always been like this. And the, the, the fellow who owns the corner, and I'm looking at Mr. Boucher, who's, I'm asking to see if I got this right. So this whole letter about this driveway and these concerns, there was absolutely no change there in the application that we reviewed.
Okay, so what you're saying is this is non-Germane. It is not germane to what we did.
Again, I, I would say yes, but I'm basing that, and again, I, maybe Mr. Shaw could chime in too, but the point is, I say yes because, but that's my opinion. But yes, because it's not on Vine Street. This is block, this is, um,
Okay.
Central Street, right? So, so it's a completely different side of the building. It almost, it almost must be, might as well be on a different piece of property, right? Because it's a corner, it's a corner block, it's two different structures, nothing's connected, so the, the one drive doesn't connect to the other. So again, I, I emphasize, empathize with the abutter, but that's not what we were looking at.
Okay, so...
And so, and so when I say no in question four is, would I have changed, would, would anything have caused me to change decision from, from the Vine Street decision? No. I, I think we are maybe surmising there could be other issues. Again, he, he states that he's been working with other folks in the city to try to resolve some issues, right? But again, not the same.
This abutter had come in and presented some of this, but he couldn't have because it wasn't in existence then. So in my mind, which makes it understandable for me, is it's non-Germane to what we did and what we discussed. It's not applicable.
This is an existing driveway that's being used for, for, for whatever law on. You know, so it's nothing that, nothing in my mind that I was looking at.
Okay, while there are issues and they're substantial, the issues are about this. They're not about this.
Right.
I understand. Thank you.
That's my opinion.
Thank you.
Do you have your?
I was just very puzzled that the owner put dirt over the asphalt and then says he's not going to maintain it, and he's going to allow the asphalt to deteriorate, and so it will go back to dirt, as if this is, it, unfortunately, it has no bearing on the decision. But I'm really not happy with what he's done.
I'm just going to turn to Mr. Falk and say, this photograph here, again, this is the driveway that goes to Central Street. Right here, right? And everything that, the application before us was for the driveway here.
Right.
Yeah, all of this stuff about, about the...
He didn't pave that skinny little area between the two structures.
He did.
He said he didn't.
The, uh, the, the letter, Mr. Rao, he certainly has grounds for complaining to other departments of the city, but I, I don't think he has anything relevant for a rehearing request to this board.
I, I agree. I mean, I, I don't think I've ever seen parking higher than that.
No.
How do you get in the car?
How did he get in the car?
How do you get out of the car?
Well, they climb it out of the window.
I see why he hits this guy's house.
But, um, so I, I empathize with the fella who wrote the rehearing request, but... but it's not, it wasn't the application before us. So that's my opinion. So I'm concurring that on number four, I'm saying, I don't like what I see here, but it's not the driveway that we adjudicated on. So I think we have four noes on question number four also. And there's, so Mr. Shaw, Boucher, Ms. McKay and Mr. Courier, for the record, are concluding that there is, on the four questions, we've had no to all of those. So I'm gonna make a motion that because the four voting members here find the four questions, we answer the questions, no, all four of us, all four questions, I make a motion that we are not gonna rehear the case on twenty to twenty-two Central Street. Is there a second to that motion? Mr. Boucher, any discussion on the motion to not rehear twenty to twenty-two Central Street? A show of hands in favor of that motion. So that's Boucher, Shaw, McKay and Courier, and Mr. Lionel abstains. With that, I'll close the rehearing request. We have minutes from the last meeting.
It's two meetings, isn't it?
Oh, two meetings. Here we have the April eleventh meeting of where it was just Mr. Boucher, Ms. McKay and myself. I don't have any amendments to those minutes. Mr. Boucher does not, and Ms. McKay?
No, I'm still trying to figure this out. You've moved too fast for me. I don't think I have anything. I want to finish this while it's still in my head.
Why don't we give her a minute to catch up?
Thank you. This is different.
While she's catching up, I was just gonna say, a few moments ago, Mr. Shaw, you said you're not gonna be here for the next meeting. And you're not gonna be here-
I'm not gonna be here.
I, I, I'm planning on being here. And I think earlier, Kathy said, so are you planning on being here? I did see that two new names were brought forward to the Board of Alderman for alternates.
Yep, I did see that too. I'm, I had asked one of the, one of them, the woman who had been named, asked her to come to the meeting and introduce herself, but I don't see her here.
So, can I ask a question about the next meeting while we're talking about it? That was the meeting that the, is that the meeting that the request for rehearing was pushed off to?
Yes.
Yeah, so the applicant for one twenty-two has rehearing request, which we were gonna speak to, but with the expected low turnout of three of us, there was a written request that we, they did not care for us to meet the thirty-day window and asked us to table it to May twenty-third because the applicant wanted to be here for the rehearing. She doesn't have to be, which could have been tonight, but he asked us to push it out so he could be here. And, and his expectation or his hope was that the five members, which was Vitale, Shaw, Boucher, Mary Ellen and myself, would be voting on the rehearing request. I'm thinking that Mr. Shaw could, I'm sorry, Mr. Falk could let the applicant know the expected turnout. And if, at this point, I'm still planning on us, or the board hearing that on the twenty-third, I would think the applicant could ask us to push that back because it's his rehearing request. That's my thought. I didn't know if anybody else had any thoughts on that matter.
Did we know, did Kathy tell us that she wasn't gonna be here today or?
Actually, she called me and she could have made it, but knowing that there were, the five of us were gonna be here, she did have some other obligations. And I appreciated that call and said, I think it's, you know, fine to go on to her other obligations since there were gonna be five folks here, we're gonna be voting on each case. So I didn't know, does any thoughts on that or just move on, discuss it?
If it doesn't violate that, I would say that maybe a court see, at least to understand that the applicant stands because if there's a number three of the committee members, may not come to a conclusion. And that's possible, right?
Yeah.
It's very possible. I'm not saying one or the other, it just could be possible. So, you know, again, I don't want to violate any, anything, any of our rules or anything, but I'm just making that suggestion.
I mean, it's not a public hearing at all, it's just a public meeting. Just a rehearing request. So we'll discuss the same questions we just did on Central Street. And so there's not gonna be any testimony from either side, so eventually, there's gotta be some finality to this board's decision here. I mean, we're gonna be going on three, four months without coming to an answer on this, so.
If we have ourselves, Kathy makes four.
Well, not only, oh, you're not, Mr.- I'm not gonna be here, of course. I wasn't on the board at the time that you made the initial decision.
Yeah, you were sitting in, in the audience.
I was in the audience, so.
But that doesn't keep, that doesn't, does not prevent you from-
I wouldn't let it prevent me. I would, I absolutely would love to be involved in this decision. But as I had told you earlier, this, I've had this vacation scheduled for a year and a half, so. You're not, you're too far back.
Okay, I, I will not be here.
That's a good summary of-
Yeah, that's a summary.
I think we just say, well, let's just move on with it.
I think we move on with it.
If something happens, if it happens, we'll just-
Yeah. Let them know that there will only be, that there will be at most four people here and see what they want to do.
And I, they could-
I don't think they really have to.
I don't even think you have to let them know.
They don't have to be here for the meeting anyway.
No.
Well, I mean, that sort of goes into that difference of opinion about, that I sent that email about, about, you know, is, is there a requirement for a full board or not? And I had two lawyers tell me two different things.
Well, if we have three people here, that's, that's-
National ordinance, we need to proceed.
Yep.
Attorney Prendergast will state objection when he hasn't had three because he knows it could be a possible grounds for appeal and could dictate some, some law, further law or at least judgments from the court.
Maybe it's time that that comes to light.
But right now, we still have to operate under national ordinance, so. And I think there's a, we're now into a tricky territory of, we have pushed out, I guess at the request of the applicant, but I think it's important for us to finish our business. Especially since it doesn't require public participation. I mean, the video is available, the outcome will be available. I don't think, you know, it really shouldn't, I don't know, we should have done it tonight, I think, really. Unfortunately, we could have, we could have had full representation. And so we're trying to accommodate too many things here, I think.
Yeah. All right, I think enough said. We also have the minutes, moving back to the minutes of-
April eleventh was the first one.
We just took care of that one. We have April twenty-fifth as a reminder. It was myself, Mr. Boucher, Ms. McKay and Vitale, who's not here tonight, and Mr. Lionel. Yes. Oh, the eleventh?
You didn't vote on it. You were bringing it up, but Ms. McKay said she needed some time.
Okay.
Because I'm trying to catch up now with this paperwork.
Yep. So where we're at was, Mr. Boucher, yourself and myself had no amendments to the April eleventh meeting minutes. So I make a motion to approve the April eleventh meeting minutes as presented. Second to the motion. And I think just three of us will be voting on that. A show of hands in favor is the three of us. So Boucher, McKay and Courier approve the minutes of April eleventh. Mr. Shaw and Mr. Lionel abstain. They also weren't here that evening.
You, Eric, you made the motion.
And it was seconded by Boucher. And it was unanimous. You might want to say that Shaw and Lionel abstained have the record accurate.
Okay.
Did anyone have any amendments for the April twenty-fifth minutes? I did not. Mr. Lionel did not. Mr. Shaw was not here. Mr. Boucher is not. And Ms. McKay, any amendments? No. So I make a motion to approve the April twenty-fifth minutes as presented, seconded by Mr. Lionel. A show of hands in favor. So that's Lionel, Boucher, Courier and McKay, with Mr. Shaw abstaining. I have writer's cramp here before we go home.
Can we get back to one twenty-two Manchester Street?
Sure.
And maybe just not even make- Because they're gonna call or email and ask who's gonna be there, confirm it and all. And, you know, I don't want to misrepresent who's gonna be here. It's pretty obvious who's gonna be here at the meeting.
Maybe you can just answer that by, all you know at this point is that Mr. Shaw and-
This time.
And I think that, yeah, I mean, I think that-
And that's all you can really say, right?
Yeah.
While we know plans can change, it's always possible, you never know. But, but they're, they're gonna be, they're gonna be very interested in who's gonna be here. And I know they're gonna be in constant touch with us because this is also pending their planning board case as well. That's also been tabled, I think, two or three times as well. I think the neighbors are, you know, everybody's getting antsy for this to move forward one way or another.
So we know that there'll be a minimum amount here to at least-
We'll have a quorum.
We'll have a quorum, maybe answer that way and then we will proceed with the rehearing.
Yeah, I'm planning, I think the board should take it off the table. And maybe we could retable it or maybe we'll rehear it. Or maybe we'll conclude on the rehearing request.
Because really, we're the driving force at this point now.
It should be. I, I think it should go forward.
Okay.
You know, it's an interesting point that if it was tonight, it normally would have been tonight, but we tabled it to a date certain, the next meeting, at the applicant's request because they weren't gonna be in the audience. Now, of course, if they're, they don't need to be in the audience because it's a public meeting and, you know.
Their desire was to try to assure that the five of us that originally voted on the case were here and by requesting us to postpone it to a date that they could attend in person, only further complicated our ability to do that when we could have actually achieved that tonight. You could have told Ms. Vitale, she could have been here for it. We could have, we could have gotten all five of us participating that way.
Yeah, so I'm not inclined to-
They don't need to be here anyway. I mean, there's not, there's nothing to be gained by them being here or not.
Because they can't speak.
Right.
There's gotta be some finality to these decisions. And I think that's why Alderman Tebow, at the time, put forward that action to-
Legislation.
Whether there's three or not, or five or not, if there's, there's three, it's, it's good to go.
All right, moving on, we have the agenda for May twenty-third. There's five cases. Also, one twenty-two Manchester Street rehearing is scheduled on that as well.
And the sign.
And the sign, the sign.
From the table tonight.
And the sign of, thank you, two forty-five Daniel Wester Highway will be case number one. Does anyone see any regional impact?
No, no, no.
So that's four, Ms. McKay. And I'm a no, so that's five noes. So I make a motion, so you could, we don't take a motion on that. There's no regional impact, unanimous. Is there any more business before the board tonight?
Make a motion adjourned.
Motion on the table to adjourn. I second the motion. Any discussion on the motion? A show of hands in favor. And we're done.